And threw up in the front of the truck. So we had to have it de-claimed by Serpro. Other than that, trucks run fine. My people do just find no issues. A four. You're gonna see a battery issue on there. We gotta replace the auto park and it felt very next week, which you should never do. But it was one of the trucks that was in use that day, so we still go to Patrick's. Auto Parkers gave us a discount on the. So we're still equal. We're not out anything there. Base maintenance, nothing, nothing's been done. It does say I have plans to replace the cabinets. Cause the kitchen bases are very bad. So I need to replace those. Yeah, I'm gonna do them all three at the same place. Uh, PPE, no change. I did get some mass from Frank, the health officer. I get extra money, so they say that everybody in the budget as well. I do have one question though, for speaking of ambulances. It's been two years since we got a new ambulance. Our last one was nineteen. I'd like to know if I can start to process of looking at an ambulance, bidding them out, that kind of. It's gonna take easy nine, ten months just to get one. And it's just like everything else out there. You're not gonna get it next week. But since everybody's here, I would like to get permission to start. My goal is hopefully to just duplicate what we have in Justin. That's the newest one, the two thousand nineteen. But I'd like to know what everybody feels about that.
Was purchased in twenty twenty, correct? We spent, so the last time we paid out, it was twenty twenty.
Is it twenty nineteen? Yeah, so it's two years.
We never really said we were gonna go every year for our new angle. It's only used to go ten years for angle. So I mean, I think it doesn't hurt to bring us to prices and we can look at your mileage and inventory at that time, but.
Not a bad thing to look at, just since we've got one.
We have a two thousand nine.
Yeah.
That's our oldest one.
Keeping on less than. So how they're in. The two thousand nine has less issues than the twenty twelve and the twenty fifteen diesels. So, I mean, which one will replace is a question, but I think it'd be a good idea at least to have it in our back, in the back of our minds, know how much it's gonna cost. Cause it's, it's gonna eventually come around.
Yeah.
Yeah, this.
Forty thousand.
I think honestly, this year, as far as vehicles go, there's this department potentially EMAs getting them something that's stout enough to pull that trailer. Building, measures, got vehicle problems with it is now. It's right off the bat. You know, who knows what's gonna happen during the year that we're gonna address. You know, at least ballpark of how much that's gonna cost us.
You know, one possibility though is, are we still gonna consider maybe the highway department gets rid of another pickup this year possibly, but we talked about maybe that last year. Is that a potential for the MA this year? And then you could give the triangle to the building commission. The triangle's not bad.
That is the trajectory. I know you had to jump it.
There's still checking in my own. Exhaust leak, but. Nice to fix it. It's driving.
Do we still look into the government vehicles?
I think that's usually what they price somehow, I think. Government discount.
You're talking about the demo ones though, right? Actually, Bill might be able to help us with that. The government vehicles too, that they give away, like maybe we could look.
Yeah, we're enrolled in that.
Keep an eye out for a couple trucks for us.
Of pickups or?
Yeah, absolutely. Or sorry, yeah, heavy van or something.
Yeah, they have lists on there. They have trailers, bobcats. They have heavy equipment. They ain't got everything.
Do you say something?
Anything else for me?
I don't think so.
Alright, thank you.
Alrighty. Start off, we lost a driver this month, past month, losses and quit. Cause we have five open positions for drivers going anywhere. Uh, so what we have done is we rezone the drivers areas that we have and marked out primary roads and secondary roads. So if we get hit heavy, um, so there may be some secondary roads. They're gonna have to wait for a second pay. I don't know what else to do at this point.
Yeah, third group is my room.
Then you got four wheel drive.
That's right. I got new tires, so I'm good.
Uh, we've been running ads with no response for CDL drivers. However, we did get a couple apps for the asset management position. Uh, we did do an interview this morning. Uh, we're gonna do a second interview on Wednesday morning. So hopefully, uh, we'll get this position filled. As far as the drivers, the average age of our drivers, and we have ten of them, is fifty years and two months. The average seniority is six years and one month. So five out of the ten drivers have less than two years seniority. So what we're looking at is uh, half the guys have been here for twenty fifteen years. The other half's been here less than two. So we got kind of a.
Part of the division in your experience.
Yes. Yeah. So, uh, we're working on that. Um, we did have some training uh, last week, and there's some more plow training set up at the end of the month. It's a regional training without that. So. Going down to the grant status, um, first call for community crossings is gonna open January third. Uh, we have, I think the twenty fifth. I'm not sure on the closing date on that. We should be fine with that. Uh, we're gonna submit all hot asphalt projects. Uh, primarily the Robbins ditch to Highway thirty and then uh, Range Road from Brims to Total Road. As far as it goes, uh, Truck sixty-six has a new motor and not new, a different motor. It's a used motor. So it should be. It's still in the shop getting the bugs worked out of it, so it should be in service soon. Um, I broke down our trucks. The average age of our truck fleet is fourteen years and two months. We have six tandem trucks that are sixteen years old. And the remaining thirteen single axle trucks are thirteen years old.
That's good. They don't have emissions.
So truck repair seen a huge jump this year. Uh, twenty twenty was sixty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five, and then twenty-one is a hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-four for truck and tractor repair. Part of the reason was we were short-staffed as far as mechanics, so a lot of things were cut out, the wiers to be worked on. And then a lot of equipment was put away last fall in a state of repair. So when we pulled everything out of the glove factory this year, about everything had to be moved out.
At least it sounds like the cost weren't the fault of the equipment though, or the age of the equipment. It was, you know, other things. I mean, an extra sixty thousand, that's a lot cheaper than the brand of truck. Still.
Well, the problem with the trucks is we have so many single axle trucks. A tandem would carry twice the weight. So, um, if we had more tandem trucks, uh, the workers would be more efficient. So like when we're out chipped ceiling, a single axle can be quality.
Can you see that as reduction in man hours as far as they can lead a path?
I see it as, yes, we would be able with the reduced number in the workforce, the tandem would play a bigger role as far as getting roads paved and chipped. Because they could haul twice as much.
We went through the opposite and we had less, when we were low on single axles, because the single axles were the take-home trucks. And so the tandems were, are considered to be sort of a specialty vehicle too, though, because they're for, you know, for projects, right? I mean, the guys are still mostly.
Well, they're built for capacity.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, the single axle trucks are nice to go into subdivisions with. Cause they're smaller, don't carry as much. But now that we have a reduced workforce, uh, tandems would carry more sand and salt as well. So it'd be less trips back to the shop.
Sounds like you need to sit down and get a more comprehensive plan or idea of what you want your fleet to look like. Yeah, and how much that might cost us.
There were, you know, there was some discussion about getting prices on a tandem.
Yeah.
Sounds like age-wise, that makes sense over, you know, if your average age is two sixteen, or sixteen years, sorry, and thirteen versus the single. Probably doesn't make, you know, it makes sense to switch one of those out.
Your tandem price isn't gonna be that much more than a single axle price.
It's about fifty thousand.
Yeah, and the truck was what, almost two hundred?
Two hundred thousand.
Total.
Yeah, so for the plow and the box and chassis.
I think the other thing to go is that we kind of went away from just going to just one vendor. I mean, I know now we have the government pricing and things like that, but just making sure too, that it's not just one vendor bidding.
They purchased, the last three or four trucks have been purchased through Sourcewell.
Right.
Which is a co-op buying for nonprofits.
Right.
An advantage of the Sourcewell is you can pick the make of truck and what you want on it, what kind of box will kind of plow. Whereas if you go to three different vendors, you would get whatever you need to their chassis. So then, um, my thought is you want the same Sanders and the same plow, so those parts you can stock and they're interchangeable. I don't think you really wanna fleet up.
And that sounds like to me, you get the flexibility of being able to choose what the equipment that your mechanic actually knows how to work on.
Yes.
Or at least has more experience with.
Yeah, we just put in, we have not received it yet. Uh, we just spent some money for a laptop that has diagnostic software on it. So, um, anytime we hit the lights on, we have to run it up to Plymouth to get it checked. This computer will take care of that.
Okay.
So a lot of the maintenance issues that we've been going to Plymouth for, we should be able to take care of. Cause when the light comes on, you don't know what the code is.
I don't know, Dan, if you guys have checked into it, but like, I know Cruz makes just boxes. We've been buying our dump trailers direct from Cruz. And we get them about ten thousand dollars cheaper than you buy them from a dealer just because you're buying factory direct. I don't know if that's something where you guys can save some money on the box. I don't know. And at the same time, help somebody that's paying taxes in our county.
That's, uh.
Yeah, I know they make steel and aluminum, so.
That would be the nice thing about Sourcewell is they can you can write your own specs for what you want. But I know when we did the distributor, we bought the chassis separate from the spring. Cause of the cost savings.
Yeah, I just know that we get a pretty good discount just because we're buying straight from the factory and it doesn't have to go to a dealer and get the dealer markup and and I would think they might do something for the county too. I don't know.
Okay, we can look into that.
You know, you maybe I'll get an aluminum box for what a steel box costs. I don't know.
Okay, uh, as far as the bridges, uh, Bridge seven is currently has a RFP out for the construction inspection on that. That should close sometime next week. Uh, Bridge one thirty-seven, you know what, Dan, I'm sorry, can I just ask real quick?
The inspection, we used to do our own inspections. Like, why are we not thinking about maybe like going back and looking at doing that again, or like hiring like Bob or somebody like? Cause I've, I've heard some numbers floating around of what, like, like, it's, it's like a hundred and fifty thousand realistic, like that.
It's fifteen percent per, of the project for a construction inspector.
So how much is that project?
So.
It's a framework of the money.
Bridge seven is gonna come in somewhere around one point four million.
Okay, so that's, that's a hundred.
So that's a hundred and forty thousand, I believe, for the construction inspection. Which we paid twenty percent of that because we're building this bridge on an eighty-twenty.
Okay.
So we paid twenty percent of that. So we're looking at thirty-five thousand.
You have to pay all the inspection, I think, don't you? I don't think that's part of the eighty-twenty. Right?
No, that is part of it.
Well, then Bob certified.
Yeah, I'm just saying Bob or somebody else, like, even though it's like paid for and all that kind of thing, it's still taxpayer dollars altogether that are, that are funding projects like that. To me, it just makes sense if we can look back into that type of a thing. You know, instead of like all these results all of a sudden.
For a building, construction inspector.
Aren't you an inspector?
We could put that in your.
No, you will not.
We will give you an extra thousand dollars a year.
Recommendation from the council to add it to the auditor.
We can, we'll give you an extra fifty dollars a year.
Alright, so as far as Bob goes, we talked to Bob last week and we've talked to him probably four times. Um, he's not interested at this time, but coming back and helping.
Do you?
He said maybe in the spring.
Do you want him to advertise that position or not? I think is what it comes down here. Do you wanna hire a consultant or do you wanna try to hire another internal person?
Just one bridge is a hundred and fifty thousand. What would we, what would, what would we pay a full-time person for that?
Forty-six thousand.
And a part-time person would be probably fifteen thousand or whatever. I mean, that's one.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
You just need to realize that Bob.
We're getting a discount.
Yes, Bob should make a hundred thousand if he worked for any other engineer.
Well, you know what? I could go through that, Dan, on every position in this county. Like, I hear that all the time. Almost so it, or it just like drives me nuts when I hear that. You know, on every position.
Forty-six. Advertise it at that rate and.
But you're close to home, Todd.
A hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, no, 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 at the existing rate.
Yes.
We, you know, that way we know whether we can actually.
That are also underpaid. I mean, just in defense of the other departments.
Todd just made a good point that he thinks if we would hire, if we'd advertised, we'd probably get a retired in-dot person or somebody.
Yeah, you might have saw an individual like Bob that would take.
I know, I know a lot of them that work for consultant firms.
Yeah. Sorry, Dan, I'm not trying to be, you know, I mean, it's just, that's what I'm.
No, that's fine.
A lot of them even do it on the preference of no benefits because they're already getting.
Maybe you could even talk to Todd, he might not even, might, might even know.
I know some people, but I think it should be advertised.
One's name was not Todd, though, I asked.
Yeah.
And not Rachel, but.
I told you forty-six thousand. We'll add the zeros after the point if you want.
Sorry, Dan. No, that's fine. So that's where we're at with that. Chip and seal, uh, we're putting a list together and right now we're around fifty-five miles. Projects. Uh, in the shop, we're continuing the, the five S cleanup project. Uh, we purchased a hundred and forty-five LED bulbs and we're actually today uh, started changing the light bulbs out. So we're gonna get a little kickback from R E M C on, uh, three dollars a bulb. So, uh, going forward, the shop should be brighter and, uh, more efficient. Right now, I'm looking into running electric along the, uh, east side of the fence where we're parking the trucks at night. To make sure that, uh, they can be plugged in. And we're looking at adding some more security lights in that area, plus, uh, lights on the salt shed. So when we load out early in the morning or late at night, uh, they'll have extra light. Uh, road sides, we've been working on seven hundred east with the, uh, bucket truck. Trimming the trees back because that's where we're gonna go with community crossing. Awarded money this year, um, from Highway eight down to six twenty-five east. Uh, so we're working in there. Uh, we had the brush cutter in that area today. As well, working on cutting brush back along the road. Like I said, last week, we had Bliss McKnight come in and talk to the guys about flagging traffic and snow plowing. Just as a sidebar, uh, Noble County lost a county worker. He was crushed in between two pieces of equipment. So that worked out well that we had that training last week. Uh, just to go over base, basics, cause, uh, the guys have been through flagging training before, but, uh, working on seven hundred east, we needed to refresher, cause that's a heavy used road. In the future, I suggested that we're shutting the roads down when we're gonna be working on them. Uh, we're short five people, so we need people to flag. So it's just safer for the guys if we just shut the road down for a half a day or a day, whatever it takes to finish the project. Uh, that way we don't have to worry about having extra people flag. Uh, December twenty-ninth, we're going to a regional meeting over at Marshall County for LTAS training on snow plowing. So we're taking, uh, four of the new drivers are gonna go. So that should be good training for them. And this is the third time they've gone through some kind of training this year, but being new. They're gonna need all they can do. So, and the solar project, uh, we attended a meeting last week with White and Blasky County to talk about um, road use agreements and what we need in them and what to look for. I think that's a very positive meeting. And then we took a tour of a job site. And that's kind of eye-opening, so. We've got a better idea of what we've got coming into the town.
This is one of the things, um, people were working with Barnes and Thornburg on. Do we have anything close to a timeline from?
Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to the attorney of both things. And, uh, he's finishing some stuff, other stuff up at the end of this year, but said he would be getting, you know, he's got the contract, understands he can change to do that. I emphasized that with him and it sounded like working again, week, two weeks that he would be getting a session, so. But I, I did emphasize also that, you know, obviously there would maybe be some variation between counties, but I think basically we're looking at something that would be similar to what they've been doing elsewhere. So he's not starting over.
It'd be reassuring to me to know just how long, just. I understand there's pretty much three things that need to be done before we think about issuing the permits for that. Wanna do some sort of full engineering review? Based on because of the.
Hire an engineer for us right now, but.
Right. So I think that would be for the talks with Barnes and Thornburg, the road use agreement and the decommissioning bond.
Did you hear from, from him yet, Dave? From, uh, uh, no, from, uh, Hall, Richard Hall, the attorney for Barnes and Thornburg. I gave, I gave him all your contact.
I haven't heard anything since you sent us the thing where you sent him the context.
Okay. Well, I might, I might bug him again here, make sure he gives attention to you also, that, you know, he could start going or.
We need to coordinate with them, I would think, to get those three things in place.
Right. These are the things I talked to him about you, so he's aware of that.
I know they're chomping at the bit, wondering why we have an issue with permits. This is why.
I, I, I spoke to one of the representatives, I think from there, then told them that, and they seemed somewhat reassured that that was the reason we wanted, and, and partly it was not just, you know, it was, we felt that was gonna be mutually beneficial because that would create more consistency among the various places that they're working and they, of course, like that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I wanted to.
No, 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 that's very important. Uh, they have contacted the highway about some of this and I've told them that we're not gonna issue anything till we get a road use agreement signed. And, uh, the back page is basically, um, results of the, the pazers that I submitted to LTAS, so, um, and the typical bell-shaped curve here. And four or less, uh, needs major work done to the roads, so you can see where we're at. Um, if we can catch them at five and six and do some work, um, that really increases the eight, nine scores, so. Part of the fifty-five miles that we've, uh, got on the map, um, they're not all one-twos and threes. There are some four, five and sixes in there. So, um, to get things back into shape. Any questions?
I don't like to ask my questions.
Still here, real quick. Um, Skill is working on a C D L class. And hopefully we'll get that in place very soon because not, I mean, the highway department needs drivers. Traffic control needs drivers. Everybody needs drivers. So we're trying to, well, not me, but the skill side is trying to work on putting together a C D L class very soon. That will be for adults and, well, students at some point, but mainly to get, uh, more C D L drivers out there.
Gonna have to raise the pay quite a bit.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's the biggie.
In February, they're changing the way to get your C D L license as well.
Yes. Way worse.
It's gonna cost between four and forty-five hundred probably.
And I'm sure Skill will be working with work one to see if there's a way that work one can pay the tuition because, you know, the average job will just go up.
There should be something through their next job, next level jobs initiative.
Right.
I think.
We'll go to, uh, Mike and is it Eldon, Donald Reiser?
Cause he saw you walk up with all the papers, that's why.
First, we wanna thank you for your interest. We wanted to know what's going on at one of your accesses and we appreciate your time. My name is Eldona Reiser and my husband is Mike Reiser. We own property at fifty-two seventy-eight South County Road two ten. And our property is next to an access. Uh, I did bring a map to you, an idea of a visual where this is located. What's outlined in yellow is our property. This property in this frontage is owned by a family named McCormick's. This is Maple Street. And this is the access we're talking about. It's a forty-foot access. So just to give you an idea. And that's kind of two ten.
So what's, what's going on there then?
Well, I'll start at the beginning. I submitted a letter to the commissioners about this access dated May seventh, two thousand fourteen. I submitted a letter to the commissioners about this access dated May seventh, two thousand fourteen. Uh, this letter allowed us to be placed on the agenda for the next upcoming meeting. Maple Street.
About the address, Rachel. I just looked it up on G I S. It put it right in the middle of that street, and then that's the one to the right. Fifty-two seventy-eight. South County Road two ten. You're on the wrong G I S then.
It, it should be in, uh, you know, obviously it's on Bass Lake. Maple, Maple, yeah, I don't know if that's gonna turn up on the map or not.
Should be north bend.
I think it's California.
I thought it was California too, yeah. Yeah, it's California. Let's name of the sub, uh, subdivision, Hillcrest, Hillcrest subdivision, Rachel, that might help. There you go, there you're getting there.
I think she needs training from Rob.
Good thing for Christmas Day.
The first meeting on this matter took place May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. What are you asking of the commissioners for this meeting? I'm just giving background.
You haven't been here since twenty fourteen.
Why are your mentions awful out here? Do you remember this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it, it's been in litigation like for years, uh, like seven years. Eight, yeah, um, yeah, with one of the more convoluted. And sometimes downright strange litigations that I've ever been involved in. But yeah, so certainly it's, and, and I, I, we thought, I guess I thought maybe it was gonna come to a resolution, but that hasn't happened, right? Okay, that's right. And I mean, if, if you don't mind me jumping forward, there was recently mediation on it, but. Uh, I don't, it doesn't appear that there actually is an agreement of all the parties, is there? When you're one of the parties and you haven't agreed, so that's, that's a simple answer, right? So, yeah.
We had a second meeting on June second. It's on the second page. It's just a small paragraph. Third and last meeting was held June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. And here again, it's talked about. The minutes state that they are allowed to appear in one vote. This is a picture, this is dated July the eleventh.
First key. Two pontoons and a little jet speed? No, there's three. Maybe, I mean, the shoreline isn't showing that.
After this, a family on the back road filed a lawsuit against us and McCormick's on September sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. For sole ownership for themselves by the doctrine of adverse possession. On September eleventh, two thousand fifteen, this family amended their complaint to quiet title by adding slander to the original lawsuit. So to give you an idea of what goes on at this access.
And it's still in the courts.
I would say that, 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 you know, it's my recollection, I mean, let's, this, this litigation is so convoluted and protracted that I, I will. Put an asterisk thanks to anything I say about it.
Right.
But I, I believe that their claim, that that claim of adverse possession, that, that uh, the court ruled against that part.
Yeah, okay.
You know, so that, you know, that was clearly, I mean, in my opinion, that was clearly not a valid claim, and you know. That doesn't really resolve the issues unfortunately though.
Right.
The judge ruled against them in both complaints. The ruling was filed on October thirty first, two thousand seventeen. Now this family has formed a homeowners association, and they are trying to get a title for this property through the association. There's nothing in their deed where they have any rights to this access and they are not paying taxes. Yet they are using it like they are late for property owners. We are now being forced into mediation with this association as to how they can use this access.
Forced by who?
The judge.
Okay.
The lawyers tell us this hinges on the fact that the county has to sign off or abandon this access. The misconception seems to be that the county doesn't want that. Our concern is that if you sign off on this access, it will set a precedent for all your accesses in the entire county. So we are also concerned about safety, both in the water and on the road because of all congestion. So this is just the brief view of what's been going on on this access for nearly eight years. Again, we wanna thank you for your time, sir, in this matter.
Pay the intention of signing off on. Yeah, I mean, we haven't, well, this being.
Can, can I, can I sort of try to summarize that? Okay, I mean, that, that, those, those are all accurate too, everything, you know, everything, you know, Mrs. Reiser's saying is accurate. It certainly gets into the weeds a little bit though, okay, uh, there are um. Some of you are probably familiar with, we have a, a plethora of different issues regarding these kind of access points. And each one hinges on the uni- the unique history and documents related to that parcel. In this case, the parcel was part of a subdivision that was, that's a dedication, you've probably heard me talk about these before. And the language of the dedications vary, and the effect of those therefore varies according to the language of the dedication. In this case, the dedication is, uh, it doesn't state whether it is to individuals who are. I, I should back up and say. I, in some cases, you have a clear dedication to the public, and that's the cases of Simpson and Frost, that comes like, it's like, there's a great example of that. It is, couldn't be more clear that it is to the public, not just to other lot owners. In some cases, it's very clear that the dedication is to off, you know, off lakefront. Property owners, so that if you own a lot that's a backlot, then you have access to the lake, but that's individual. To the backlot owners, it's what's called a right appertinent, which becomes a, uh, we have a, a great example of that at Bass Lake Boas Shores. Uh, they have, the backlot owners have rights appertinent to what is the Boas Shores of. Lakefront Park, and in fact, it's a taxable interest, it's part of the, it goes with the land, okay? Now, in this case, the rule, you know, the, the uh, status of the property is ambiguous. Because it doesn't say whether it's dedicated to the backlot owners or to the public. It's, and, and one of the issues that was litigated in court and is still being litigated. Is some of the attorneys take the position that if it doesn't say to whom it's dedicated, the presumption is it's to backlot owners. And, you know, I take the position in it that really you can't make that conclusion, but uh. And, and in addition, as, as Mrs. Reiser stated, there was another property owner who was a backlot owner. They claimed that they just owned it themselves, which was an unfounded claim, clearly enough. However, it isn't, uh, um, you know, because this debatable point about whether it's dedicated. To just the backlot owners or whether it's to the general public is an unresolved question. Uh, one of the positions I took in court was that the only way they could assert the claim. As backlot owners was through some kind of official organization, in other words, one property owner there couldn't come and say. Well, since it's dedicated to backlot owners, it must be mine. If, but if all the backlot owners got back together, got together and formally, you know, legally created a homeowners association. Like they have at Boas Shores, they could assert that claim. It wouldn't make them right, however. Uh, and, and what the process was is, uh, the judge ruled that there should be mediation on this. Because until there was a proposition that would be agreed upon between the parties. Uh, there wouldn't be anything that could come before the commissioners for you to decide whether to accept it or not. And, and that's where we're at now, and you know, if, clearly the Reisners are. Parties in interest as much as anyone, because they are adjacent owners to this as a McCormick, and yeah, we have to say McCormick's and the Reisners. Are the parties that have the most obvious, clear vested interest in this dispute, it doesn't mean that, you know, what the result of it is. Now, they ha- as I understand it, have not agreed, and, and the court couldn't require that you go into mediation, but it's not arbitration. Meaning that they don't have to agree. Now, what happens if they don't agree? Well, I guess, you know, we, we would find out. It, it was my thinking that the commissioners would want to see a proposal. Uh, that was based on all these things happening, in other words, that they would have a homeowners association that was a legal homeowners association. Uh, and, and frankly, you know, I, I never got to the point where I actually made an opinion as to whether they had successfully complied with the statute. Uh, and I'm not a hundred percent sure they have, I guess that's gonna, that's gonna go on, it's more years. Um, but, so I hope I, I, you know, and, and it's all that sounds right to you, right? Do you have any questions about that? They say they have a homeowners association, I would have to say that it would, you know. It, it, the court hasn't approved that, nor had the commissioners agreed that they want to do that. And of course, the commissioners could take the position that they don't think that the backlot owners of the property owners, and the court could decide otherwise to. Court could just, the, the, the evidence is certainly one that a court could reasonably rule. That the backlot owners own that property as a right appertinent. Or a court could rule that it was, that's not the intention, that it was actually intended to be a public dedication. And that is somewhat supported by the fact that it's an extension of a street that is actually a public street. You see what I'm saying? So it, it is, it is not a slam dunk for anybody as to who actually owns that property.
But there's nothing in question that this body controls that little posting stamp.
Uh, the, currently, in my opinion, they do.
Okay.
You know, and currently, in my opinion, they do, however, uh, the party that they've referred to has kind of. Squatted on the property, and that's why, I mean, I said that in court, I mean, they've kind of, you know, asserted control over whether. Uh, they had any real legal basis to do that, and personally, I think absent a homeowners association, it's been approved by the court, I, I personally don't think they do. But that's, that's my opinion, you know, this is an area where opinions are uh. Certainly variable. And I said, one of the key distinctions was. Some of the attorneys in the case felt it was obvious and clear that in, in absence. Of a specific public dedication, that a dedication was to the backlot owners. And I don't see that to be the case, because that's not true for other public dedications, for example, the streets. The streets are, you know, we have streets in many subdivisions in Stark County, right? Uh, in, in probably ninety-five percent of them, those street dedications are taken to be public street dedications. We have a few subdivisions where there is a, there are private streets, but in those cases. The fact that the dedication is only for the private use of the property owners and not for the general public is a very specific term. So I think that provides some authority for the proposition that when you make a dedication of a common area in a subdivision. That the presumption is it's for public access, right? So this is, unfortunately, Indiana law on this point is, I, I think poorly developed. And so in many other states, this question would be easy to answer, but unfortunately, it's not here. So, sorry, not that long-winded, and, and, and hence you've been, I mean, I, I have to say. Hence, they have been through no involvement whatsoever of their own, they've been involved in this lawsuit that's gone on for years. I apologize, I have one more thing, when it's negotiation, I took active part in the litigation on behalf of the county. When this party was trying to basically take this property that I thought was clearly not theirs, since the, since the uh, back. Backlot owners essentially have, uh, at least tried to comply with the homeowners association rule. I have not been involved in it, in the sense that I think they're at least promoting a point of view that is reasonable. And uh, that if the parties could agree on it, then we could submit it to the board, but you know, I, I, I don't think that's gonna happen at this point, so. I hope that's helpful, that's kind of a, it's a unfortunate story, really.
What do you think? I mean, we haven't had any requests for this, it's, it's tied up in the courts. My first inclination, knowing only what I've heard at this meeting, is to go back to this. Decision the commissioners made um, in twenty fourteen, as far as. What they would allow since the control, that particular. Piece of ground. Their, their um, decision with uh. You know. One peer, one vote, and then the question becomes enforcement. What mechanisms do we have available for enforcement of that, because I'm assuming you're here today because. There hasn't been enforcement of it, I mean, all those pictures are cool, but you know, what, what did it look like last summer? Did they comply with that?
Okay. It, it is, if, if, if you don't mind me, you know, sort of. The, the evidence, as I heard, was particularly on holiday weekends, it becomes a big party scene that is annoying to you. And unreasonably disturbs your, your peace and quiet, is that a fair description?
Not just ours.
Yeah, but.
Area, whole area.
Right, right.
You know, a lot of homes in there on the lake, bro.
And, you know, so if I might suggest that, obviously, you know, we're gonna have a change of attorney in this litigation. Just like pretty much every other party has had a change of attorney in this litigation as long as it's been, and some more than once. Just like pretty much every other party has had a change of attorney in this litigation as long as it's been and some more than once. Uh, that you might consider, uh, you know, formulating, uh, you know, specific instructions. Or at least, you know, uh, confirming them to make instructions on the position they should take. That since it doesn't appear that there's going to be a settlement agreement, that, uh, you know, I, I think it would make sense to go back to court and say, well. Since this isn't getting settled, you know, it looks like we're going to be the ones controlling this, at least for the time being. That, uh, we, these are the rules that we want to see. And, uh, you know, if anybody doesn't like that, they need to explain to us why we don't have authority to do that. You see what I'm saying? So because it is under the, you know, you don't want to do anything that is contrary to the court. Uh, you know, presenting it certainly. It's been through more than one judge. We have a different judge now, I think. No, it is still, it's still Judge Schramm. Yeah, he's doing it as a senior judge. He started doing it. He was, he was a young man. Still, seriously, it's a really, it's been a case that has been ridiculously protracted.
We're on our third attorney.
Yeah. You're not the only one. So I mean, I don't know, if, if that helps, you know.
So I guess we can't really. I mean, like I said, it's, it's, um, just what I've seen, it goes down to the, you know, the decision we made. I don't have any information to, or change that. It's just a matter of having enforced.
Probably get that information to your next attorney and ask them to see if they can, you know, bring that forward in court. Because that may end up being what happens, honestly. You know, I mean, it seems like absent, you know, a homeowners associate. Because that is a position I actually, if they didn't have a homeowners association that was accepted by the court. That they didn't have any basis for asserting anything, even if you accepted their theory that it's a backlot or property. And by the way, another side of that is that the other property will be taxed for that property interest. It's just as they are at Boas Shores, for example. That becomes a vested taxable property.
It's chaos at any given time. It doesn't have to be a holiday.
Yes, and it's anytime when it's nice out there. You need to get some people that are more annoying, Mike. Chase them all.
Marty, is there a possibility of, um, structuring an ordinance in the future that defines all properties that way? With some kind of a fine or a, or a penalty for defining the rules?
I, I think that there has to be some, you know, I mean, that there's sort of a two-step process on that. First of all, inventorying all the sites that fit under that category, right? Uh, and, and, you know, it's just really unfortunate that we have this ambiguity in Indiana law. Whether those properties are under, uh, let me, let me give it another example. If, if it's clear that the road was intended to run to the, to the lake's edge, I think clearly there, and, and we have some of those, a bunch of those.
Right.
I think those, it's pretty clear that the county has at least some authority. And there's even a basis for authority on ones like this, when there's nobody else has authority, it's called a trustee ship. So I think an ordinance that both, you know, the, the catalog, it should catalog the sites as well. And state the basis for each one, um, and, uh, that way if somebody doesn't like it. They, you know, you would know what you were arguing about.
Who would, who would catalog that with a park board, something like the?
Well, I, I kind of, you know, we, we've kind of started a little bit of that. I mean, we've done a couple, I, I just. Couple of months, I did, uh, memos to the park board on, uh, for Kuntz Lake. For, for most of Kuntz Lake. And, and I think that's sort of a start, but then you have to decide what you want to do about it, right? Uh, I think in the case, you know, this is a tough one because, you know, the status of that road is a little bit, you know, hazy as well. It's about, this is about the hardest case you're gonna run into. Most of them are gonna be a little more clear than that, I think.
Can we just pave clear to the lake and call it good?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a tempting thought, actually, right?
Now it's a road.
Well, that's the thing, see, too, because people kind of feel like it's a road, whether if there's pavement and it's not a road, if it's not pavement, but that isn't really legal tests, actually. If you have, if the county has an easement, they could put a road in, but you don't have to put a road in. And also you could have it just be a walkway or a bicycle path, and that would be perfectly valid, too. And there are, there are quite a few easements like this that are only for pedestrians.
The only problem is they're not all marked. We marked them all and then cataloged them. I mean, then we could.
And putting it into those terms, it's sounding a whole lot like two other headaches up at Kuntz Lake.
Yeah, right. Well, no, it's, it, it is a lot like Kuntz Lake. I mean, so I think since some of them, Kuntz Lake, for example, we have some where it's, it's county road seven hundred. And I, I'm just thinking, it's kind of a certain county road number. And then I think those are pretty clear, that those, those are, you know, the county has an easement there. This is, this is a hard one, um, for that reason. And then, then there's a bunch of places also where there was originally. Uh, a park dedication, and then there's been a bunch of quiet title actions where the property across the road was awarded that. Now, I have to say that I think the legal basis for that award property was, was not that strong. But the court ruled that way and it's been long enough that clearly you can't reopen those questions, right? So, um. So, yeah, but I, I think cataloging them, giving them, giving them, you know, essentially numbers or names, mapping them, taking that position. And, you know, find out if, if somebody wants to challenge it, then they challenge it and the court has to decide. Uh, you know, I mean, and, and like in this case, that's what we're looking at. It's, they're not all gonna be as hard as this one. But this is probably the worst case scenario in many ways, you know, in terms of the legal, legal status of it. And the case got off on a bad foot, too, because the, frankly, the plaintiffs, you know, took a position that I don't think was really, you know, you know, supported by the law. It is something that would be good to resolve, at least most of them.
It's pretty funny, I mean, for all those sites.
So next summer, when it gets overcrowded and noisy and annoying and all that fun stuff, and they want to call somebody to complain.
Well, I, I mean, I think there'd be a basis for calling the sheriff's office anyway, because, I mean, if it's, if they're disturbing the peace, essentially. I mean, I think there'd be some authority for it, and I do think you have some authority over these properties. Uh, because any, it's unfortunate, once again, Indiana laws isn't clear on this as it should be, but it, there is, you know, there is the chief executive body. Has authority over properties of that type in terms of at least maintaining order, right?
Right.
And I think if you took the position that you were, you know, that it was more of a maintaining order thing, uh, that, uh, you know. It would be hard to argue that you couldn't do that as, as a police power. You see what I'm saying? If, if you're not really claiming the ownership, you're claiming that, you know, you're serving your more broad police powers. That helps. Yeah, when, when a neighbor, when neighbors are like, you know, you know, being inconvenienced, I mean, if, if, if you do that on your own property. If it was clearly yours, the neighbors could still complain, right? And here they, they don't have that.
At least the officer will know what the site then, too, because I think the big problem is, is like. If somebody has a dog and they have to go out, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's this nice, some of these sort of, um. Sort of nebulous, you know, uh, you know, arrest functions or, you know, things that they have to do, if they just know what to say, like, hey, you're violating this. Um, and you have to disband, you know, authority of the county commissioners or something like that, you know, I think. Something more concise to help them. I don't want Bill agrees with that, but, um, that might help, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's merely establishing that it isn't, I mean, I, I think it's probably, Bill would, I mean, might disagree, but if you're on, if you're clearly on your own property, you get some slack, right? But if it's, if you're not clearly on your own property, I mean, if you were doing, it, think of it, if you were doing this on a public right of way. You know, obviously, the, the police have, you know, easier authority to come up and say, quit causing trouble here on this public right of way than you would, um, on your own backyard, right?
Both are the same.
You don't think they're different? Yeah.
Okay, complaint of disorderly conduct for a lot, a lot of complaints, so.
So, so there you go. They could, they could do it for sure then.
Yeah, so to me, that should be our position until.
Until court rules otherwise.
Till the court decides something else.
And, and like I say, when you, you know, you get your next attorney taken over, you'll want to give them, you know, that'd be on a list of things to brief them about quickly, at least. Or I could even have a list of things. I'll probably need to give you one.
I would, I would hope you have a list.
Oh, I do, but there's always something to add. I don't think this one was on it, but, yeah, but I'll put it on there.
Does that authority also cover though, if they have more than one, I mean, noise is one thing, but is it also covered if they have more than one boat?
I wouldn't think so. I, I think that's probably still like a mitigation, so I'd be, that'd be hard.
I thought during that last meeting they had in there, they determined a DNR when the, during the boat.
That would be a DNR anyway, because the lake is, is a public freshwater lake and it's under jurisdiction of the state, not actually the county, anyway. So, but the ground, the land is.
So then they've got all those golf carts around that property called the sheriff, and when they got warden, one boat on the pier, called the conservation officer.
Yeah.
Sounds like that's the, that's the remedy until it gets further through the courts.
We have contacted DNR, but they're getting response.
Yeah, uh, the, the, this is gonna be tough, gonna be a tough sale. They don't have the personnel to cover.
Are, are some of those, those, well, I know some of the ones, is fire lanes?
Well, the fire lane thing is, is, you know, indeed, that was a function of them. I don't know that they were dedicated as fire lane, you know, but I think there's the history of use as a fire lane is relevant.
Something like that solved the whole thing. Take all of them.
Change the dedication.
Is access, is fire department access, and then there you go.
If, if you actually needed them, I don't know, they don't actually load their, their tanks that way anymore, though, do they?
Yeah, they have two, two turbo draft.
I would, I'd bump out of the lake anytime.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a lot easier and hauling it in.
Yep.
Especially in small places like around the lake where you can't get in and out.
Well, you know, that's, that's an avenue to look at that might, you know, it would create a basis for keeping them clear. You know, and people would still be able to go there, but they'd have to keep it clear.
It cools like they are. I don't know about Bass Lake.
Some are, some are not all.
I try to stay away from too much ruckus.
Well, please look into that. That's a possibility, because I, I've thought about that, too. There's some nice homes in that area. Someday, they might be, they may need a fire. You got time, if you're ever over that way, at least you can see what's going on, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, next up, um, we have possibly a new attorney here, uh, for the county, uh, Justin Tramp. You have one up here.
Morning, thanks for having me.
You still want to be considered after?
She told me before I even knew she was. I've had three people say that since, but not back down yet.
I forwarded, uh, the CD to everyone. Uh, we kind of on a search jointly between the council and the commissioners. We had started with a shortlist and so we have Justin here today. Um, I think.
You, I, and Charlie met with him.
We, we did meet, um, as well to go over some things and answer some questions. Um, I think one of the main things that was moving where there was, there was some discussion about your activities, being the North Johnson attorney. Some of that was satisfied, and maybe we could go over that disorder, but you can hear that. And then the other thing was, the financial piece of it was a, a big concern, obviously, on both sides, but especially the council. And I had mentioned that we had talked about, uh, a retainer approach to start off the first year to see if it was mutually beneficial. We, you know, we've, uh, obviously had a very, uh, forgiving attorney in the past. And, you know, financially, that makes it harder in the future, you know, when, when things are, you know, sort of transitioning, you know, um, so. Um, but that seemed palpable to you, so I, I think before we end up, one of the things we want to talk about. And did you have a chance to talk to Ms. Norm about potentially working with the park board?
I called her last Thursday after we talked, but she's not back yet, but yes, I have.
Is she on?
Her brother, her brother passed away.
So, yeah, so, but in my discussions with her, I think she was pretty warm to it. I talked to Rachel about the possible be creating budget to add to that, so that would help that retainer, um, aspect. We kind of have a, a, a number for that, we were thinking. So, you know, getting the party started there, but, um. I, I think that, uh, Judson wise, we had discussed that, you know, there was some flexibility with North Judson. And it sounds like the first, the, the first of the month was more important than, than the second meeting.
Yeah, it, it just depends on what we have on the agenda. They've been pretty forgiving in the past. If I am a few minutes late to the meeting, it's not a big deal. You, you know, I'll be open with you guys, just like I was in the initial meeting. You know, I develop a longstanding relationship with North Justin. Um, you know, just as two or three years down the road, things work out, I would look at you guys and go, hey, someone's gonna pay me more, I'm dropping you. So, you know, they're, they're willing to work with me on scheduling. I would ask, you know, the same kind of thing, you know, of you guys, because I have represented them for five years now. It's been a great relationship. It's a very high functioning board over there. I like them a lot, so, you know, there is some give and take ways. And, you know, if, if you guys are very set, you know, I'm wanting to do that. Well, I mean, I understand. I don't ask anybody to jump through hoops for me, based on my scheduling. But I like being as transparent as possible. And congratulations on your retirement or semi-retirement, whichever it's gonna be.
Well, I'm gonna keep working, but that, you know, I've done this for long enough. And it's been great, too. I will say they're, they're excellent client, you know. Certainly, I'm, and I'm available for any kind of help with transition.
I appreciate that.
I, I, you know, when I started doing it, it was like a whole bunch of paper files came piling in, but, you know, I hadn't really how we do things anymore. So I would, I would probably transfer stuff to you like electronically primarily, and then there will be some that will be paper. Hopefully not have a truckload of old files.
You know, and speaking of the scheduling part, one of the things we talked about on the council side, I don't know how everybody feels about that. We talked about maybe looking at four thirty or five, um, then that six thirty, you know, plus the travel time getting to Judson, because their meetings at six thirty.
Yes, and usually our meetings are nowhere near this long.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, only a couple of bar and burgers a year.
If, if necessary, would even change the day or the week. Be something we want to look at.
I'd rather do that than the time. I mean, summertime, four o'clock, you know, Brad.
We have Zoom now.
Well, I'm not saying four o'clock, like, we were talking like maybe even five.
Just move it to half hour.
Monday's always a nice day because it's the beginning of a business week. You know what I mean? Another day kind of offsets that. The other reason why we did Monday is the commissioners have a meeting that's. Confluent with the commissioners, you know, that way, too, because if they have something that needs to come to us at nine. You know, obviously, the most convenient was when we had a joint meeting, but, uh, you know, clearly for us, for some, um, and a lot of times for us as well. A morning meeting is not, uh, you know, gonna work for us. Um, so, I mean, I think one of the things we could do, too, is, I mean. We would just re-advertise. I mean, we always send our reading notice, you know, out in advance. We could try five, at least for the council. I don't know, the commissioners, like what times work, but maybe for us, if we stuck with Monday, we could try five. You know, theoretically be done by six, then you have travel time to six thirty. I mean, if, if, if that would, you know, work out, I don't know.
The Zoom work is a quorum, like a time running late or whatever, or Brad.
Really, you can't vote, right?
Yeah, it's, 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 once, speaking of things that are complicated, that statute is really complicated. And it wasn't, I mean, I would say it's more useful for the commissioners than it is for the council. Because the council, you know, the rule is pretty much anything that deals with budgetary issues.
Right, you can't.
You can't, and that doesn't leave much room for the council to do much justice.
But I mean, we could, they could zoom or I could or whatever, and until we got here and then make the vote.
Well.
You just can't vote on it.
Yeah, right, you can't vote on it.
But for Cora, Zoom counts.
As long as your video is on. You have to have, we have to see your face as well. I found that, yeah, I found that out at the commissioners.
Interesting. They, they said fully participate. I don't think you had necessarily have to be seen to fully participate, but oh, well, that's what I'm saying.
It is not a Rachel rule.
We'll learn about those.
The other, the other issue, if, if you wanted to think about the time for a second, the other issue, though, that was brought up during our meeting was. In the event that there was a conflict of interest between the two entities, North Justin versus the county. And that there would have to be some type of alternative litigation, you know, litigants or, you know, a representation, I guess would be the better word for that. Um, I think we're gonna look to Marty with some advice on that or just.
Well, I I think, you know, fortunately, that probably isn't too common, but yeah, it could happen, and I think that's that's what you'd have to do. Somebody would. One of them, you know, attorney would have to not be involved in that, had to have a different attorney. And of course, as you know, we. You know, we've always occasionally had different attorneys there or situations where a party came up who had been previously a client of mine. Uh, you know, in which case then litigation had to involve, you know, had to be done by somebody else and myself. So. You know, yeah, that's right. What you end up doing is getting another attorney involved. That's unfortunately, that does raise costs, so I don't think it's. I mean, have we had a case where North Johnson in Stark County had a dispute in the last fifteen years? I don't know.
I tried to do some research on that. I would, I found nothing.
Well, I mean, having been a North Johnson resident, I think I remember that and I and I don't remember that ever happening, you know, uh, we we could have. So hopefully that wouldn't be too frequent, yes, you would have to have some attorneys in that situation.
Brad, Brad was talking about just that there was some sort of contrast, at the very least, when that recycling company wanted to come in within city limits. And there was some cross discussion. I don't know if there was a real true conflict, but I think the. Yeah, big discussion.
Us trying to find out a way to get it done.
Yeah, I think the commission was in support of it and the city had some holdouts or whatever, but.
So I have third Monday for the council at five P M. Third Monday, so for the commissioners, nine thirty A M. What are you thinking for your first Monday?
That's still, that would still create a conflict for your schedule is our first Monday of the month.
They meet the first and third month. And again, I I I don't want to sit here and say, hey, rearrange your schedule for me. I do feel bad you even having to have that discussion, but.
Now, I don't know if it's me, cause but I come to a lot of your meetings. I don't know if your meetings are always as long as ours, you know.
But I know I'm not. As far as the rest of the week. Day or time. Think about it within those parameters.
Brian's retired. He can do it whenever.
But I don't mind doing it in the mornings, really.
See, do you wanna start with like first and third, nine thirty A M. and then change it if it doesn't work out?
I like having. One in the evening, one in the morning. That way we can get. But the public who can make it in the morning and then the public can make it in the evenings.
I agree with that.
Flopping around to your morning one on Monday.
Well, yeah. I mean, it doesn't matter. Yes, as far, yeah, as far as to keep that. Yeah.
You didn't want to try five?
Oh, I mean, like you said, I'd like having them morning. I like having the morning meetings. One meeting, one in the morning. That way I don't have to have department heads come in after hours.
Right, and I mean, the other, the other one for five.
As far as just move it to half hour, that'd give him plenty of time to get down to Judson. If you just moved it to half hour. Rachel would rather have it at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Yes, you do.
Switch the time.
Five o'clock?
Yeah. And we'll see how that works.
But I I think still we're being a little. We, you probably still want that final number, don't you, on what the retention would be, just.
I mean, that's, that's my concern, because I'm, we've gotten so spoiled with Marty. You know, am I, are we, are we still gonna have him? And do I get to call or email anytime I want without having to worry about running that bill?
Forty-three, let's buy.
Forty, so it'd be forty-eight. Is that something you need to talk over with your firm or?
No, I know that's something to discuss in our initial meeting. I do have a lot of good staff. Uh, that's why I'm able to do what I'm able to do. Um, I I would like to talk with Marty and just say, yeah, and I do the same thing with one back. I'm probably one back. I build at a much lower rate because. Old town Brighton, I'm sure Marty has has done for the same reason. I mean, if he's working a hundred hours a month. You know, I would say that that's probably not a good number, but it's within the realm of what I.
Is it something that would be reasonable that you could give us an answer by Friday?
Oh, yeah.
We could vote with with the, you know, uh, contingency. Since we're in session, because otherwise we're gonna have to have a session before the thirty-first to talk about this again. And then lots of those two are, I'll look to alternatives for that.
I would say ninety-nine percent certain that that would be okay, because it's within the realm of what I thought to begin with. I just would like to have a final discussion with Marty to see. What you guys all have going on just thoroughly.
That'll be easy. I can just send you like, cause I itemized, saw this thing, you know, sampling, I itemized.
Oh, we're gonna have to watch like Mark said for like.
Well, we we did discuss that, so he has internal staff. The main thing would be like bond activities, like things that are outside. Just everyday business.
That we would have hired out anyways.
But you know, when there's a bond, there's actually usually funding in the bond for that, which is actually, you know, one of the more lucrative parts of the practice.
Yes, that's another reason why it would be outside of that, just because it's fair that since it's there.
What I'm referring to is, you know, the times when I just call you up on the phone.
Sure.
And, hey, this is going on. I don't know what to think. What's your advice?
And and that's very important, because.
Department heads that especially during election time would utilize Mr. Lucas, too, so.
Well, I think he's gonna look at that in the average. That's all you built.
I I build for like at least most of that, right? So, you know, there'll be a good, there'll be a good, you know, profile of how much time's involved, you know, just, you know. And Rachel's seen all those and has all those, you know, so. This kind of, it's actually a pretty good footprint, what, you know, a couple typical months are like. I can just share those with you.
Well, and you might want to talk to your department heads, too, about like not calling. I mean, I'm sure Marty gets some calls, like they don't really need to be calling Marty for certain things.
Should be a protocol for that. If it's something that the commissioners or the council or jointly can answer. Then it should come to the executive bodies first.
Right.
Um, that's a good point. I mean, we, we, since we would be changing attorneys anyways. A protocol for utilizing the attorney might not be of that idea. Maybe that's something Marty could help us with, too. Um, or or jointly with, you know, with who we partner with, you know, sort of some a protocol for utilizing the attorney.
I like some of that.
I mean, I have twenty-four seven access, but everybody else.
Make a motion, the contingent on Mr. Schram. Accepting the forty-eight thousand that we appointed as our attorney for twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion in a second. Um, is there any further discussion? All this asked discussion, this will be separately then for the council. It's a joint session. I just want to make sure this is, this is for the council on this side. All those in favor, please say aye. And is there any votes? All in favor of Richard?
Now, that's not just the council's forty-eight thousand, that's it.
We had talked about possibly revisiting it like in July, visiting, you know, him.
Well, so we could rebudget for twenty-three.
Right, yeah.
That wouldn't do anything for twenty-two.
Right.
Um, what I would say for us, with the, with the two lawyers talking about rates and then. At our first meeting of the year, make the appointment as we would in a normal year for Martin.
Yeah. You know.
Since we already have a fiscal constraint to go by.
So if I need to talk to somebody about stuff for the next meeting in January, am I still going to Marty? Who am I going to?
You're still it till the fifth.
Well, unless it's a council, I mean, the council has already agreed. If they agree, he's as of.
Yeah, you can.
January first, he's our attorney, so you've been, if he agrees.
You can do it now if you want.
No, no, by all means.
But as far as, far as any business, if there's a gap, because their first meeting is the third, correct? So from the first to the third, if something would happen, then I guess you would have to bill, Marty would have to bill at his regular rate if he's willing to do it. Or Mr. Schram could bill at his regular rate, or you know what I mean? You could hire an attorney temporarily, right?
Or if you have question, or if you want, want to just chat with a general member of the constituency and get his opinion.
I guess what I'm saying is like for the meeting on the third, there's a lot of things Marty would review, so I probably need to let him know what's going on for the meeting. So he can review those items, correct?
Well, what what's, just I'm here asking, what's holding back for you voting contingent on their agreement now? If she needs that, so you don't have to beat again, I'm just saying.
First means five, fourth, third's probably.
Okay.
How they base it on, you know.
No, cause I don't know how to word it.
The same thing that I said.
Contingent on.
Contingent on.
Motion you would entertain and I will make that motion.
Contingent on.
Him accepting the forty-eight thousand.
So moved.
All is in favor, right?
Thank you.
That'd be your expectations.
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Josh.
Mark did say that, still want to.
Yes, yeah, they do have.
Everything, yep. Alright. No problem. The other thing I was going to, you know, I'm not here for, uh, council is just a little. So that's just reading material.
Lost him about.
Okay, so the main reason I'm here today is just to kind of um, talk about draft agreements. Um, I already understand that the funding for um, the foundation will be the same next year and we appreciate that. Um, but because we are under an annual contract rather than which someday I'd like to see it. Become a three to five year contract, you know, if.
If you're, if you're happy with the amount they're willing to give you, we can make this a three.
Well, well, I'd like to talk about it. But knowing that this will be what it is for the next year. Um, and so Ron was going to be on Zoom and he's been trying to get on. He said he was on. I said, we don't see you. And so I will be just presenting a skill memorandum of understanding as well. So last year, we were asked to um, reduce the size of our board. And last year at this time, we had twenty-eight board members. We're currently down to nineteen board members. With twelve of those being representative members from, from banks, from utilities, from other governmental entities. So we are at twelve representative members and seven at large. We did drop three at-large members uh, at the end of this year. Larry Wicker, um. Who else? Tim Cummins and Ben Osinski are all off of our board at the end of this year as at-large members. So we are currently at nineteen voting members, which, like I said, what is down from uh, twenty-eight last year. So we're, we're reducing our numbers through attrition and other means. So what I have proposed. In a, in my draft agreement for this year is, I mean, it looks very similar to last year. Um, removing uh, the information about the board member makeup. Now, the one thing I did want to address and that I left in place is the um, representative, representation. On our board from the council and commissioners, because right now we have, and and I didn't change anything, so we have two council and one commissioner. Uh, listed on our board of directors with the commissioner being on the executive committee.
What, at what point in time did we take the council off the executive committee?
Um, it was in last year's agreement that the representative member.
I think we did that just because of form concerns, uh, public notice concerns.
Isn't a public notice concern with that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if.
Or maybe, or maybe it was done.
Cause I was on it last year, but not this year.
Right.
Or maybe that was part of our compromise to reduce their board.
Right, no.
So the council never agreed to that, though?
It got passed insane last year.
Yeah.
Um, but, I mean, we certainly can make a council and a commissioner.
I didn't know you guys wanted to spot on the executive board or else someone made that part of it. I thought you were good, you were, I mean, you were.
We had it before and you took it off and nobody asked.
Well, I mean. Big deal, because from the information I got. There weren't, there wasn't much of a attendance from anybody, anyone on our board before last year, so. Uh, yeah, we'll put a council member back on.
Today, because we've got until the contract is due again.
It's in March, right?
Yeah, March first, so I I wanted to bring that. So that's certainly something we will, will add a um, council member to the executive committee. Um, but as I started to say about the um, appointments to the board, we have two council and one commissioner. Now, Don White is a council member, but he's an at-large member, so we technically have three council members and a commissioner on our board. So I I don't know if that's something, you know, I certainly, I certainly don't want to say, well, Don, you have to go off. You're an at-large member. Cause Don's been a very, uh, I mean, he's been a very supportive part of our board for many years. But um, on the other hand, if we're still trying to reduce numbers. You know, what do we want to do? Do we want to consider Don as one of the council representative members?
Is Don the only at-large member still on the board? Why would you automatically look at Don though? But if he's such a great member, why would you want to eliminate that at-large members, eliminate one of the other at-large members then?
Well, I could interject something. I mean, I think in order for them to be, you know, for a person to count as one of the, the, you know, the commission or the council. They would have to be selected by the commissioner or the council, right? I mean, the fact that they, that, that, that maybe. The economic development foundation picks somebody that happens to be a councilman, that's fine.
Right.
But they don't count, they don't count for the seat.
Right, we didn't pick that up. I guess that's my point. We didn't pick that.
A lot of years.
It's just, do you want, I think what she's asking is, do you want um, to count as one of your representatives and then only appoint. One other, or do you want your two plus Don?
I think they picked Don themselves at the at-large. That's a legacy thing, so I I wouldn't, personally, it's up to you guys. I don't want to make a decision on that. I would say if you're happy with Don's service, then eliminate one of the other at-large members.
He does not count as our member.
Right, have him on there as an at-large.
Okay, well, like I said, we have reduced our at-large members um, through two of them or one that moved away and two that. Shows to help the board out by leaving the board, remaining on a, one of them is remaining on a committee. So um, but like I said, so this is kind of like the first go-round and let's take a look.
But if I could just speak from that time, because I was in that time period when, you know, the commissioners were really looking at that. I I think there was an expectation from this consultant that there was gonna be a, a little more substantial reduction. In the members of that board, but that it wasn't gonna be, I mean, we were already in low numbers of representation from the government side. Like, I don't think that was ever intended to reduce our membership. It's because, you know, normally a board has like seven or eight people on it. The fact that it had, what was it, twenty-eight?
We had twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I mean, that's. By most standards, that's considered to be ridiculous.
Another thing is, I'm happy to start asking representative numbers. We have bankers, we have utilities. We have other governmental entities. Um, we have the hospital C E O, we have a school board or a school superintendent.
And that's what I don't want to do is um, start dictating as far as. And that's what I don't want to do is start dictating as far as your representatives. Because that, that limits your ability to negotiate with other parties, kind of like you do with the county. You know, we're making this part of our contract that will have X number of representative members. So I don't want to say, oh, not only do we want our representation here, but anyone else you, you do business can have representatives because we limit your board.
Well, we weren't limiting their board, we were limiting their funding based on the, what the consultants came up with about, you know, the functionality of economic development foundation to try to increase the amount of economic development activity and start.
Productivity, there's, you can't get productivity done when you have twenty nine people on the board.
And I'm quite fair, if you think that there are representative members on our board that need to be taken off, let me know. I mean, we have an attorney on our board who is an at-large member, we need an attorney on our board, just like everybody else needs an attorney on their board. So, um, the hospital CEO, I, I mean, we have.
Which like that, you brought up the hospital CEO of the schools, I've never seen either one of them. No, I forgot about it, she, I thought she was at large.
Uh, no, she's a representative member as a school board, they just, they just appointed Dr. Reckert from Knox, so he's now on our board starting January first.
In place of?
In place of Annette Zupin, and, um, so, yeah, and then the hospital CEO is by virtue, the mayor of the city of Knox is a representative member by virtue. So, yeah, it's, and we can.
Because the impetus for me saying, okay, let's not dictate how big their board is, was their plans they come up with wound up cutting a representative from the Knox City Council. And I don't think that's something we need to dictate as far as another entity also buying into.
And as of now, we have no Hamlet Town Council rep.
Well, that's their choice.
That's the kind of their.
But you reached out to them that you want to have one, so does Judson have one?
Judson does.
So Judson and not, Judson and Hamlet have one and Knox doesn't?
Knox has, no, Knox does have the mayor and Jeff Byrd.
So Knox, so Knox has two representatives in the city.
But when I told them, but when I said.
Whatever they want to pay.
When I said, okay, we'll cut Jeff or we'll cut a council member, they said, okay, we'll cut your funding. So, you know, it's, it's hard to, you know.
Well, we're not really dictating what they have on there, I'm just saying personally, up to the council. If you want Don White on there, cut somebody else, if you have to cut somebody, I'm just saying that we've got our two representatives.
I agree.
And I sent the letter out saying, you know, you guys need to employ somebody for our board next year, your two council members and commissioner member. And, um, so, yeah, just let us know who those ones will be and, yeah, we're happy to do what we need to do. Also on here, it lists the, the amount of the contracted service for the year. Last year of this amount, we were directed by the county to give skill eighty thousand dollars of this total cost or the total funding, which we did. And this year, skill has more students, their budget is up a little bit more. Um, so I talked to the outgoing skill director, which is Ron, he's been trying to get on the meeting and has it happened. Um, and said, what if we gave skill forty thousand this year instead of eighty thousand? So that's kind of how I outlined it on the contract. Again, you guys made the, um,
Call last. That was based on my understanding, you guys, the council only made the one appropriation to include what the county is going to pay full.
Right, in the past, it was.
Yeah, I, I've just, you guys just gave me the one pool of hundred and fifty nine thousand.
And in the past, still had a contract, and the foundation had a contract, still got this amount and the foundation got that amount. And that's just the way it was until about three or four years ago, and we started redoing contracts and doing them annually. And then last year, when you said to put the one amount in the foundation contract, the foundation then gave the eighty thousand up to skill, which we did.
So I, I'd actually, instead of an, oh, you, I'd actually like to see two separate contracts.
I mean, and that's.
And then where, where we pay forty thousand directly to skill and then we only pay you a hundred and nineteen thousand.
And that would be my preference because one of the pieces of that review that Thomas P. Miller did said separately.
Separate, yes.
We have, you know, I've, I came in and talked to everybody about why we're separate and how we're separate. And in my opinion, if we had just separate financial agreements, that's an even more, more of a separation, so that would be my.
So how much, how much did you give the skill center last year?
Eighty thousand.
Eight thousand, so you're going to give them forty thousand this year?
Yes, their budget is up forty seven, uh, forty seven thousand dollars.
So that means you'll be getting actually forty thousand more from us than you did last, did last year.
That's correct, based on this total amount. We have also, I mean.
You want to play those numbers a bit?
Well, we have talked in the past, I mean, you know, that was the big discussion over time, like we were supposed to start reducing the numbers. We talked about.
The financial number?
Yes. Right, Rachel?
For skill.
And then, but we never said that we were going to take that forty thousand necessarily and give it back, no offense to the foundation, but we never said that's going to be money that we're just going to flip over to the foundation to, you know, to spend there. I mean, and at one time there were things taught, you know, like separate things, like programs for, not just small businesses, but, you know, like these loan things and like scholarships, like, remember that Marty, like there were some, a lot of other creative things that we talked about doing with that. That other money, but I guess.
There was a revolving loan fund that was discussed that the county wanted the development foundation to spend fifty thousand dollars a year for. Well, if you, the county says you have to spend fifty thousand dollars a year on a revolving loan fund, where are we supposed to come up with the extra fifty thousand dollars a year?
Well, I'm not just saying that, there were other things too, like we talked about like scholarship, you know, um.
Through you guys?
Well, with, we talked about this ideas of what to do with that other money, um, Don, I keep forgetting that. You were around when we were, we were talking about just reducing that budget and using it for other economic development purposes.
Um, we didn't even ask them to be funded and stuff.
Right.
Money going when we, as we was pulling the wood.
Right.
Well, I'll tell you one thing that, um, an idea for a funding source for the foundation, which obviously would, will not happen with the first uh, solar economic development agreement, and we can't go to a solar company, just like I feel like it's, it would be difficult for us to go to a J W Hicks or a Cruz and say, we'd like you to fund us. In my opinion, it's almost like a favoritism type thing, whoever gives us the most money. So we're looking at, at ways to figure out how to get funded in the future. And one of those ways could possibly be through an economic development agreement with a solar company. So, I mean, you know, the first one came and went and we were not part of that. Um, I talked to a solar developer, they said, you know, not the best work practice, not the best business practice for us to give directly to an economic development foundation, but it could be something that is part of your county economic development agreement.
Who actually drafted the O U that the council signed with this, with Manna project?
Well, we worked on, uh.
Yeah, we, we were, we were assigned that by the council or by the commissioners, Marty, myself, Brad.
And Charlie just.
Oh, and Charlie was your.
You three were the panel, uh, and I, I did a lot of the writing, but yeah, that, that was the group that did it.
So, you know, after some discussion with developers, with Baker Tillys, they're like, absolutely something like that can be included in an economic.
If I could just spend just a second on a solar agreement, there was, there was a purpose for that though. I mean, there was a reason why we didn't include the economic development foundation and that is that we should have the latitude on what to do with those funds, we could still grant some of those funds to some project that you come to us with.
We could take those funds and pay that contract.
There's a lot of different things that could happen, but the thing is, is that we, we don't feel comfortable with just saying economic development foundation. Here's another person's money, spend it, you know, however your board decides, that just, no, that's great government practice.
Yeah, that is something I'd like to figure out how to get into the contract, is, is a little more either defined, quantifiable, deliverables, which is tough.
Use this money just.
It's really tough, because it's, it's kind of like commercial real estate, you can put your effort into twelve clients and not even make one deal. But, um, you know, there's also, you know, the recording that. It is, uh, you know, we can ask, or at least the auditor can ask for the access to your audit, but as far as actual, you know, and it would make me feel better if, if I got something for you that, this is, this is what we did with your product money that you gave us. And that way I can, because every tax dollar spent is an investment. And its return is measured in all the things that you, that economic development is geared towards. Like I said, we just need to find a way to quantify that.
And we are working on our inner report, which we're hoping to be able to do that with our inner report that we will present probably in February before the contract expires and the next one comes on. Um, that's our goal. Uh, so anyway, these are like, between the skill and the foundation are basically just graphs for you to kind of look at. Uh, feel free to make revisions, get those to me and we'll, we'll work through these before the contract is up at the end of February. And then the only thing for the council I really wasn't here for, but I did want to give you an update of things going on. The last thing on the update is the industry survey. I did send out a survey to approximately eighteen manufacturers. At the moment, I've only gotten six responses, but I won't follow you, um, of the six responses. And we just talked about this, there are still a lot of open jobs out there, sixty job openings with those six companies that have responded. Um, the starting hourly wage among these six companies has increased in average of fourteen point three percent since November of nineteen. And currently, every one of them are having difficulty filling positions. It's just, it's a national crisis, it's not a Stark County crisis, it's something that is across the board. Uh, the current average starting wage among manufacturers is sixteen dollars and seventy one cents. That has increased since I, well, a lot, but in the last two years, since pre-COVID, um, fourteen point three percent increase, so, you know, where our starting wages were in the thirteen to fourteen dollar an hour range. Um, the average starting now is over, it's almost seventeen dollars an hour.
That's increasing everywhere, not just here.
It is, absolutely.
Nobody wants to work.
Just like it's a problem everywhere, the wages are going up everywhere. The current average hourly wage in manufacturing is twenty two dollars and nine cents an hour. So that's just some kind of hard numbers that, um, I know you guys like some, you know, hard numbers and to know what's going on, but that's kind of where we are, I would have liked to have gotten a few more responses from manufacturers. But, um, the group that I did get is kind of a full spectrum. Now, I, I didn't get a couple that I was hoping to get, which may shift the numbers a little bit more. But of the respondents that we've gotten, sixty open jobs, fourteen percent increase in wages, almost seventeen dollar an hour starting wages and twenty two dollar average wages, so that's kind of all I wanted to. Yeah, they've gone up for sure, with matter of other, I mean, we haven't had choice, I guess.
Market, market rates has kind of nullified the actual statutory minimum wage, so.
So, like I said, I would love to provide two separate, um, contracts, one for skill, one for foundation. I would prefer that skill be funded separately than the foundation, whatever that looks like for us, you know. Um, but like I said, the skill budget is up, our budget is awful. I mean, uh, compared to skills, what, they do have about forty seven thousand more this year in revenue than they had last year because of more students. Um, and like I said, they're also looking at the C D L program and hoping to get that in place very, very quickly, Wes.
As far as that revenue number, is that calculated in such a way that next year you'll come back and say that their revenue has decreased by forty thousand dollars? Because we gave you, we gave them forty grand less?
Uh, potentially, I mean, you know, what we know about, we don't know until about October what skills numbers will look like as far as their enrollment and what their budget numbers will be, so.
I think to Mark's point, I think one of the things, just in my experience of being on the board for, you know, a few years, every year it's what you brought up, the commissioners and the council are always wondering specifically so they can report to the public, what did those dollars go towards? What, what is, what was it for? X amount of dollars for this, for this, for this? Um, I think I can speak for the council on this and please chime in, the other thing is, for me, if there's ever a scenario where the economic development foundation gets in a deal, to a deal where, like with that property getting offered, personally, I will make the motion for our board to defund. I'm still upset about that, like I, I know that you didn't have a lot of control over that. I guess I don't, in my recollection, I don't know if that was brought before the board, before our representation to vote on it.
It is, still hasn't happened and I don't know.
But the fact that that was offered to the economic development foundation first and then it was given to the city.
It wasn't offered to the foundation, it was offered to skill.
We're, we're still still, we're still talking about forty thousand here for skill, I'm just saying that. We're still funded.
Yeah.
And they're still advised by the economic development foundation, um, I'm just saying personally, I don't ever want to see that again.
Yeah, I guess, I guess to that point, you know, how many people that are on skill that are also on economic development boards? Skill board, you've got a skill board?
Yes.
And you got the.
There are, um, I want to say four.
Four people on a skill.
Yeah, I, I think there's only four.
Are all four of those also on the economic development?
That's what I mean, four are on both.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess my question I just asked Dave was, why don't we have any representation on the skill board? If we're giving them money, why don't we have?
Absolutely, you could have, I mean, Dave was part of the workforce development committee.
That's just a.
Always met after the skill board meetings, yeah, I mean, I don't have. Um, now, I, I do know that.
You can write that into the contract with, uh, with skill board, if you guys want.
The county funds it, somebody should be on there.
There will be a new skill director as of January first. I know they're going to list the position, uh, or post the position. Um, I, I sit on the skill board, but I'm like an, as an official. And, um, Dr. Reckert will be interim, uh, skill director until they hire somebody. And then Jerry will remain at skill, doing what they do every day, working with the kids in the classes and everything. So, um, that is what I know will be on January first. Um, they were thinking of trying to let that ride till the end of the school year, but it sounds like they want to hire a skill director as soon as possible.
I think, from my standpoint at least, I'd be more apt to give money to the skill board if we had representation that knows what it's going.
I think that's fantastic, I think that is, I, I. I would prefer it that way, honestly.
Are you guys happy with the forty grand to skill?
Or, you know, if you think it needs to be more, I, I, in fact, in the contract, I put up to, I said forty thousand dedicated, but then in the skill memorandum of understanding, we put up to.
Honestly, I think once we pay you, you guys can give them however much you want out of your budget.
Well, do you want, I mean, again, I'm just trying to separate as much as I can separate.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the thing, we wanted, we wanted separation between the two.
Right.
So.
Yes.
So how much, uh, are, are we happy with the forty grand?
Well, let me just throw, let me throw this out here, so they're saying that they can do with forty thousand less, so that's from skill. Now, I was going back to historically, we talked about taking some economic development money and putting it in its own fund, and the economic development foundation could apply for it. Somebody else could apply for it, we could do something with it, like we've been talking about that for years and we've never done. But if there's forty thousand that's kind of available, maybe we do that. You know what I mean? Like that forty thousand sits there in the economic development fund, but the commissioners and the council has control over it, or just the commissioners, whatever, but. I mean, what do you think about that, Marty? We've been talking about.
Well, I mean, I think one of the key things is, is that, yeah, that you're, you know, if you get back to this thing about deliverables and that, that's always, uh, it's tricky because, you know, on the one hand, as you aptly said, uh, the fact that you didn't get any, you know, return doesn't necessarily mean you didn't do a good job. And, you know, the fact that you got a good return doesn't mean you did a good job necessarily, you know, but it's, by the same token, you don't want to quit doing it because it seems like it's something that somebody needs to do. Um, and, and so, you know, strategies for accountability and for performance review are key. I, I, you know, and this is something that we've looked at a lot, so I do have some thoughts on it. I think the first one is, you know, aside, e- e- even though it may seem painful, a short contract period is one that is effective there. You, you look at it every year, I don't think that you've like unreasonably cut off funding, uh, you know, but I, every year you look at it and it's just working for you. Um, and, uh, you, you know, being able to look at how the money spent afterwards, because if it's on a short contract, if you didn't like the way it was spent, then you, you, you could just quit funding it the next year, right? So you do have a feedback system there. Um, having people on the decision-making boards is another key one, you know, that helps too. You know, that helps too, right? Those those seem to be the three obvious ones. And and another one would be that you actually had some money that you you could, you know. Give to say economic development for a particular project that can say, we want to put money into doing this one thing. And if you had funding that was available, then somebody else could come along and say they wanted to do a project. And you could fund them instead. So those are, those are all ways that you could, you know. You know, recognizing the difficulty of deliverables and still maintain supervision over taxpayer money, which I think is something that's very important.
You could RFP it in some way, like there could be something that comes up that. Something else needs partial funding. I don't know, something related to a partner. I don't know, but it's still economic development related. And they could bid for it. Economic Development Foundation could automatically put their bid in every quarter.
One thing I do want to get to the point where we're not doing anymore is when we ask you for something and then you give us some other invoice for it. Like signage on the firewall. Things like that. I mean, I want this to be the only payment we make to you.
Do you, do you want, well, so we manage the firewall. Do you want the county to take it back over? We managed the firewall for the county.
Well, that's, I mean, I want the, I want your management of the firewall included in this contract. Not to exceed, not to exceed what we're already paying.
So like economic development should have paid for the signage is what you're.
What I'm getting at, yeah.
Well, not, but not if we manage the firewall for the county. I mean.
Part of this contract, that management function part of this contract.
And the rail, we've managed the rail for the county as well.
Right. That should all, to me, that should all be wrapped up in the same.
Was that not in the contract at one time though? Most of those, the rail and the will?
I don't think so.
Cause it's, it's always been this sort of nebulous extra thing. That we've dealt with from the days before there were even a cap, you know, it was just a, an agreement from some. Board makeup in the nineties and the economic development that was created.
Aside from, aside from, you raise a good point, actually. Rachel, aside from paying the bill for the firewall anymore, what else is left there? I mean, why? I mean, that's a good point. Like what do we, what do we pay for the managed separately? What do we pay for the management of the firewall now? Twelve thousand?
They do all the firewall billing.
As part of the one fifty nine.
No, it's separate. You're, you budgeted seven thousand five hundred this year.
So the fire department. I mean.
Pay that much.
You're not paying them to manage it.
And signage for the firewall, that all comes out of that seventy five hundred.
They basically do the plans for free for us.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm trying to say is the one fifty nine, then they're doing administrative part of it.
Yes, they are.
Mark wants that written into the contract, right?
And the same probably then with the.
With the rail.
Makes sense.
My only thing is. We have accountability to who elected us. Correct. And my only question is, right now, I can't explain to the public where the money went to start with. So if we drop the skill center down from eighty to forty. There's forty thousand more that we can't explain.
And give, give still their eighty thousand. They've gotten eighty thousand dollars a year forever.
I'm not trying to be obstinate. I'm not trying to be obstinate.
I'm good with that.
I'm not trying to be obstinate at all. Well, I'm just trying to get to the.
Well, I guess what Todd's saying is if, if they can get by on forty thousand less. Then why are we giving that extra forty thousand just because?
Yeah, which is another twenty five percent.
Put the forty thousand in.
It's a chance for us to start what we've been talking about for a decade of doing a program like that, like. The Economic Development Foundation could be a bidder on it. They can put their bid in automatically every quarter. Commissioners can decide, you know, hey, this is what we're gonna fund. And they may be the only one that applies for it, but at least it opens up the door. You know, like, we don't like to fund township stuff and other things like that, but sometimes they need like a little kick, like a to, you know, to, you know what I mean? Like it might be some smaller project and they say, hey, we need ten thousand in matching funds with the commissioners. It it's gonna, it's gonna benefit the county for economic development. With the commissioners, we willing to kick in two thousand. From, from your fund that you have set up for other economic development projects. I mean, we've talked about that. Do you think that's something we like? What do you think about that, Marty, from a legal person?
I mean, you you would be basically having a grant program that you be, you know, you be handling and 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 I think, you know, I mean. If, if you were available to provide, maybe, I I don't know for same reason, if it doesn't. If it's not out of compliance with a particular grant application, you said by township, township could have a grant application. And maybe matching funds come from this, you know, if that was what you wanted to do.
Or a city or.
I mean, I think what Todd's saying, the tricky part about this is that, you know, and I, I can always, I've come back to this over the years, so it's a good thing for me on my last day here anyway. Is elections are supposed to have consequences, right? And this is one of the way that elections have consequences is that, you know, you boards, as you, as the personnel changes and different elections. You can, you can adjust your priorities based on what you feel like you're, you know, your voters wanted you to do. And 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 I think that's always an important thing to maintain. It has to be balanced with some long term things. Cause obviously the county does enter into long term agreements, like for example, on a bond issue. But, you know, but keeping these things where you can always adjust course always seems like good policy to me.
And I would be, I I think it's a great idea if the county wants to manage a revolving loan fund. Mary and I cannot manage.
I don't want to be calling it a revolving loan fund, cause I don't know if I'm personally interested.
Scholarship or a grant or a whatever. If it's county managed, that, you know, uh, Mary and I do not have, we've already lost one personnel from our team. So we are a two, two person team and we we do not have the.
That's, I guess, that's a pretty good question. What, if we cut forty grand out of your budget, what do we lose?
Well, we're really not cutting it out of there, but no.
Well, I mean, that's what you're suggesting.
No, no, because that's forty that they're, otherwise we're gonna give them forty more than we gave them.
Same exact month they got last year.
So to frame it differently, cause we've, before I came in, it was cut, what did we lose?
It was cut about. Well, it's cut by twenty thousand, but then it was separate because so it was cut by twenty thousand. But skill had always got their separate, their eighty thousand, we had always gotten a hundred and eighty thousand. And now we get a total of one hundred and fifty nine thousand between the two entities.
So what did we lose when that happened?
Twenty thousand dollars.
No, as far as services from economic development.
Nothing. I mean, I don't think we slacked because our funding went down. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, like, this goes back to, like, trying to figure out what we're getting from the money we're giving you. So when we cut, did we get anything less? That means we can cut more until we start getting less.
And the whole thing is, Mark, we're not cutting, they're gonna get the same exact amount they got this year. If, if we did take that forty thousand away, it'd be the same exact.
I mean, if you made it available, I'd just quarterly say this, it'd be, you don't want to make it something too hard for you to manage either. But let's say, for example, you could have somebody apply for up to ten thousand a quarter. Could be the Economic Development. But then by the end of the year, you would catch up, you know, like, you know, like the last month, yeah, that's fun, either I'll carry over or is there some other project? I mean, economic development could be like, we put the sidewalk in at the corner, you know what I mean? There's a lot of different things that could qualify.
One of the factors that we can use when calculating what the return on our investment is.
But then you guys could decide, hey, we've got the last of it. Can we give it to the Economic Development Foundation? Let them utilize it? Cause right now it's, it's surplus money that we're talking about.
Well, it's not. If we're like to look at our budget and if you like to look at our financials, you can see that it's not surplus.
But if you got by on that much this year. Why do you need forty thousand more next year?
Our budget was, has never been in black. There's been in the red. So.
See that? We didn't get any numbers on it. Do we have that? No, I'm just saying, usually if we're gonna negotiate something like that, we would know that you were short, say forty, then it would be a better.
That's, that's what I was thinking. What did you, what did we lose?
And in the past, in the past, um, before Rachel was on a church, um.
We definitely.
Through our audit, went through our finances and, you know, that's part of our contract.
Yes, that's right. They did, she did that and she approved it as being fired.
So my, my last thing is, the only reason I would like to see longer term agreements in the future is because one of the things that you guys asked us to do. Was work on our strategic plan. If you do, if you have a strategic plan and you don't know if you're getting funded, then how do you carry out a strategic plan? So that was, that's kind of my, I'm gonna end on that one, because I have been up here long enough unless anybody's got questions.
No, like, like I said, if you're happy with, with the level of funding, I I'm more than happy.
I'm not happy. Of course, I'm not happy with it, but you know.
I can, yeah, we can make this a three, four year contract.
This is what I was told would be.
I I think, if you'd like, I think we should just poll the council. I mean, I think it sounds like we're more supportive taking that forty, making it available to the.
Which we have to march.
Yeah, but a plan for that, where the commissioners, would the commissioners normally have sole discretion over something like that, Marty? Or would the joint boards?
Well, you're talking about, so you're talking about, you know, funding, I mean, typically. Yeah, once it's appropriate. However, I I would say, you know, one of the things that's really good when the two organizations cooperate and speaking of conflict of interest. You can have a conflict of interest between the council and the commissioners too. I mean, I, when I, in my early days of representing the council, you know, they didn't always see eye to eye. And so, yeah, I mean, you don't have to agree on stuff.
What do you guys think about what he's proposing?
I've had that wrote down for a while. I was thinking of seventy nine thousand four eighty to the. Forty thousand dollars, just like what you're talking about. That's actually, cause you're only giving forty to skill instead of eighty. It should be seventy nine four eighty for our county development.
And then neither one gets the other forty. That's what you're saying.
Well, are you saying you support a program like we were just talking about where it's available to them or?
I would.
And you're saying keep the skill completely separate. Get them their forty thousand.
So obviously I made it worse by suggesting the number for skill.
If skill says, hey, we want to add this program, these are the benefits we think it's gonna bring. You can try to get that money back from the commissioners.
If I can interject something on that too, and one of the things they're talking about doing a C D L. And one of the things in our discussions with them, we, you know, I think we looked at things that were obviously like employment positions. That were lucrative, that we could get more people in Stark County doing, and that was the number one. And so they are being responsive in that regard.
And if they want to start that program, they by all means can go back to the commissioners and say, hey, this is what it's gonna cost for us to fund this program.
But to enhance that, we also talked about a scholarship program back when, I I I'm pretty sure it was back when Don was around as a commissioner. That, say, for example, it was forty five hundred, the student, you sponsor them with the forty five hundred and they pay it back. And that way that, that. Well, no, I mean, that's what she's talking about is a revolving fund. That's how it revolves.
Well, what I meant, what, see, back in the day, when Kathy was a commissioner. She wanted the Economic Development Foundation to provide a revolving loan fund of fifty thousand dollars. That you would give to a small business, not necessarily to, not to a student, but to a small business that they would then, you know, pay back. While we've looked at revolving loan funds, Black County is an example, the county manages.
Wasn't there something done in Judson?
One thing that happened with North Judson, um, so Dan and Otis has been in dire straits because of her. Trade show business and, you know, the pandemic. And so the town of North Judson said, well, we will help Dan with a loan. And the foundation, what they would normally, they give us two stipends a year, just like the county does. Our money that we get from North Judson is twenty percent of their seeded. And we said, okay, we know Nan's a fantastic lady, let's try and help her out. So we gave them our first stipend of the year, so that didn't help our budget. We gave them thirteen thousand dollars that they put with whatever the. Town of North Judson gave her for a loan that she will then start paying back in May of next year. Uh, we'll get our money back from the town of North Judson in probably quarterly increments, uh, based on her payments. So, yeah, I mean, we did that, but that's, I, that's not like taking a small business and having an official revolving loan.
Hard to manage. If that forty thousand was just there for whatever and it was a grant, not a loan, not a grant. Uh, I was just thinking on the C D L thing, it'd be nice for the student to be able to pay it back. In that case, like that might be unique for a scholarship. Or other things like, it's kind of, you know, this, you know, hey, like, like I said, example, like we've had people come to us. Do you want to do a project that a part was ten thousand dollars?
We've got some work to do. We'll make some adjustments to these contracts. There's a hard discussion today. Ready to get more?
Yeah, can you get, I don't know if you can get skills, the board approval of adding somebody by our January meeting? So we can do that appointment at the same time we do all the rest of them.
They've got a skill board meeting at January sixth.
Ours isn't until like the twenty fourth.
Okay, I think Ron might be watching via the YouTube. So, um. We can send out a poll. I don't think we can pull the skill board together between now and the end of the year, but I think we can do a poll. Our bylaws allow email for approval of something like that. So. I can talk to Ron to get something out to the skill board. Yeah, if that's what you'd like to see.
The other thing I just want to interject to you about skill, is I talked to Joe Riker a little bit, need to get back with him and just have some discussions. The school is getting much more involved on the student age. Skill students, so that's nice because then the adult.
Vocational center base.
Several people, like we've had these discussions, like we can't, you just brought the numbers, we can't hire adult people right now to fill job positions. So obviously we're really hurting in that adult market for a medium, you know, for fulfillment of jobs.
And and that's another thing, if they hire a skill director that wants an actual salary, Ron has pretty much been. Kind of hanging in there for almost next to nothing, uh, as they. Like twelve hundred dollars a month. And they want to hire a skill director and if they, you know, it needs to be somebody who is very well versed in. Education and vocational programming and. So that forty thousand dollars gets your revenue support salary.
Bender claims in the amount of four hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy three dollars and ninety nine cents.
If the council wants to use the bathroom or anything, since you're doing claims.
Is there a motion to approve the payroll claims in the amount of two hundred forty six thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty three cents? Is there a motion approved minutes for Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty one? Take it. Follow the favor.
Oh, the in dot agreement, uh, it, it's, the main thing is in dot once. Yeah. And the second thing is, you know, like really, there's a lot of language that says you have authority over county roads, which we all know that you do, that is well established. But one thing it does that changes things is it authorizes Charlie as president of the board to sign documents for the whole group, for all three of them, okay? And so, uh, basically what you're gonna want to do is, you know, I mean, it's anything that involves a policy decision, any change of course, whatever you're gonna need to probably do in a meeting, but otherwise he can sign just, you know, basic stuff that they have. Apparently they must generate some, Rachel, you'd know better than I. Uh, they generate. Yeah, they generate a lot of stuff that maybe is fairly routine and, and that just allows Charlie. Right, it has to be done right away.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept the resolution for the execution.
Did you mind if the sheriff goes first? She has to get to the hearing.
No.
Yeah, so, um, it was actually, some of you may be aware, it was brought up at a recent commissioner meeting that we had not done our semi-annual review of the commissary fund. It's just an oversight, was really wasn't on purpose with anybody. Um, so this is just an opportunity to end the year. Basically, this will be an annual review since we didn't do our six months. So, um, there was some contention um, of the hiring of a consultant, um, that was working as also a deputy for a special investigation and that person has also been retained, um, from the commissary fund to continue helping clear cases out. We heard this this morning, actually, when everybody was waiting that there's actually been a lot of benefit through this activity.
He's also doing training.
And helping with training as well. And Marty has agreed that, um, with all the other advice we've gotten on top of it, Marty has agreed that this is an allowable, um, expense. Um, again, it's discretionary funding that the sheriff has anyways. So, but if there's, I, I will say also that, um, I participated, um, with Charlie, uh, with the state board of accounts on the audit um, of including this fund. There were a couple of minor findings, but there was not anything pointed out that was being done here properly within the fund. Um, so.
It's just a summary on the, on the, you know, on the use of the funds for that. The statute says the commissary funds can be used for, uh, basically anything the sheriff thinks is necessary for, uh, controlling crime. And I, I feel like certainly this investigator and the training, both the investigation skills and training would, and his investigation background is, is impressive. Clearly falls within his discretion and that.
Another thing that was brought up at that meeting was that we didn't have a report from the special investigator. We've got, we got that before this meeting today. Um, he had turned it in September, that what you said, Charlie? I think it was turned into the special prosecutor in September. Uh, they reviewed it in October. But after September, he's not working on that investigation anymore. That's when he started doing the training with the, uh, officers, correct? Or I guess he'd been doing the training the whole time, but.
He's great job. He's really, he's got those guys.
Yeah, I mean, I think there were only two minor, really minor findings on, uh, even on the audit, but they were like a couple of dollar things.
Well, they told me I found something wrong.
Yeah, I think that they put their gloves on and, yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the council about? Do we want to make, somebody want to make a motion to accept the report?
I'll make a motion. We accept the, uh, semi-annual financial report from Sheriff Department Council.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Go ahead.
You're good with this one moving forward. Do you want me to do?
Um, well, that's a good question. Yeah, I mean, it shows the amounts. I don't know. And in past times, it also showed just a ledger of what was bought. I don't know if the council wants that or not, but maybe in the future, like I said, I went over it in the state board of accounts audit, but maybe for the next year, for the, for the speech six month period. Might be, this is a good idea. Yeah, that's, that's helpful. I didn't ask for it this time, but I think in the future that.
And it, this is literally just a compiled report of what we.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, there was nothing, nothing strange there. Um, so but for the next six months, it could just be a, you know, more of a comprehensive. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then there were some transfers also.
Great.
Yeah.
Make a motion to the Stark County Sheriff's Department. We make a additional appropriation in prisoner meals and the amount of thirteen hundred dollars, uniforms, thirty-one hundred dollars, overtime, ten thousand dollars. That's nine-one-one overtime. Great. And a reduction will be made in inmate dental, the amount of twenty-nine hundred, jail supplies and the amount of fifteen hundred, extra help and the amount of three thousand, office supplies, fifteen hundred, service contract and the amount of fifty-five hundred. And then trying to do that different because there's a ton of different funds, the second page.
You can do the same.
Okay. And also make an additional appropriation in the amount of fifty-five hundred, the utilities, building maintenance, six hundred, repair and maintenance, six hundred, laundry, eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, utilities, twenty-three hundred dollars, building maintenance, three hundred dollars, garbage, two hundred dollars. Make a reduction, a reduction in CAD of forty-three hundred, prisoner meals, twelve hundred, inmate medical, six hundred, and extra help, fifty-three fifty.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Just for one further discussion, Rachel, help me make note of that. I'm only looking to see what the CAT project looks like for next year for our budget. It looks like there's a surplus there that. Any other further discussions? Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Yes.
Yeah, what?
Oh, gosh. Otherwise, why do we buy that? Two devices, eight hundred bucks. Okay, so where are we at? Because I thought we weren't gonna have to do this. So what did, what was, what did they advise you on this?
Um, please do not.
How are we talking about resolving that?
I think she understands more of the deadline for the dates. If she, if she knows she's negative, she has to turn in that request the state by certain date, and that wasn't done in this case, but she knows the deadlines now and that shouldn't happen again.
It will never happen again. I had reached out for, um, guidance on how to handle the situation. And I wasn't aware that there was a deadline. By the time they got back to you, the deadline had passed.
Just a little nervous about that. So like, you know, like in some cases, the person is responsible for that. I mean, and I'm, I'm not saying I want to move for that, but I mean, is, is there any legal issue with that, Marty? I mean, where were we thinking about taking that, Rachel?
Auditors.
I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have to stay at the county general. And as you know, county general's not looking good right now. So, but as you know, as Charlie knows, we got written up for negative funds in WIC.
Right.
Couple of months ago. I mean, we can let it go and get written up again, but and it'll be repeated too. It's not just gonna be a.
Time to resolve it. I mean, I guess, um, things is really funny about that though, like, you know, like when, um, person goes out and buys something and they pay sales tax on it, maybe they, you know what I mean? Like if they're, they have to pay that out of pocket, you know what I'm saying? I just want to make sure this isn't one of those scenarios where.
Yes, in government, department heads, if we can't pay late, like the county can't pay late charges in taxes.
Right.
If I pay a bill late, it has to come out of my pocket.
That's what I'm saying. So like in this case, I'm not sure how this works with grants also. I mean, I'm, even if we say we're gonna pay it from somewhere else, are we not compliant by saying we pay it? But right now, we don't have a choice. You know, places is the general fund.
Right.
I guess that moving forward, we may want to put some teeth into that kind of thing, you know, not just for, not just for your, you know, I mean, just the grant in general, I mean, rely on staff to, you know, be timely about that. And possibly there are other departments that are more grants. So. Yeah, and I told, I fully believe that too. I just want to make sure that we make the right decisions too, as far as when we get audited, we're supposed to have instruments in place to prevent things, you know? And so in this case, we need an instrument in place that says if somebody is not compliant with a grant, that there's some type of a penalty associated with that, right? Generally, I, I think to have the teeth in it, I mean, moving forward, we absolutely would, but moving forward, I think just in our discussion, especially together, it probably has to be something there that says if you buy for a grant, you intend to do it, and you're financially responsible for it. I mean, it's your job.
I, I actually agree with that. There's a grant at another department that I'm dealing with, um, twenty-four thousand dollars. And I've been asking for an update of when we're gonna get the money for about six months and still nothing.
And so, I mean, we might, we have a grant coordinator now, which is Joe also, which kind of helps with some of those things. If, just as long as they're reporting to the grant coordinator, though, I mean, it's only as good as they're, they're still personally responsible for their own grants, you know? Marty, how do we put that into place? Does that come through an ordinance? Or like, how do we, how do we establish that?
Yeah, maybe just a written policy that you need actually, you know, you probably don't need an ordinance on that.
Policy. And so.
Probably should have a written policy on it, so that's, you know.
Is that something we would.
Properly developed, you know.
Our new attorney?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, unfortunately, I didn't, I don't really, I don't have the answer because I wasn't even really aware of this particular issue.
Yes.
To be honest with you, so.
The state board of council perspective, in eternal direct and in the form of a resolution, we're talking about resolutions, or, since resolutions are directed mainly to, to your staff. I think for the SBO's liking of the situation, might do it by resolution, or free or by policy, either an employee handbook or some other directive to your staff. I think that would probably cover it on both fronts.
Right, I agree. It should be incorporated in the handbook also.
So, I mean, could we actually, I guess I'm just thinking, right, like, we need to do something about this immediately.
Especially if there's one that's lingering.
Is there a possibility that we can move on something now and add it to our, our policy then, or, you know, our employee policy under grants and then just write it up? But can we, can we do the verbiage now and vote on it?
I, I think you really want to direct it to your, you know, direct it to attorney to draft it, because I, we, you know, wouldn't want to try to do that without.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that off the cuff right now.
Yeah, I would.
Just afraid of being a much more expensive.
Well.
Yeah.
A twenty-four thousand dollar one that Rachel just brought up, and I don't have any idea who it is, but, uh, if we get stuck with that, where are we gonna get that from?
Well, I guess right now, since we're in joint session, the one thing would be at least for this, I'm going to report. It sounds like we're in agreement. This needs to come from the general fund and we're gonna have to gap it. We're gonna have to have some meetings at the end of the year to, you know, figure out, well, technically we can go into the, into the red, but we don't want to, but technically.
We get written up for it.
Right.
Because.
I don't even know if there's an alternative.
For WIC, we get written up for, for other grants, maybe not, but for WIC, we do because their fiscal year ends September thirtieth, so everything should be kosher by December thirty-first.
So. Great.
Yeah.
Make a motion. We, uh, make an appropriation out of the Stark County General Fund and the amount of forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents to whip breastfeeding, ninety-five oh five, and ninety-five hundred WIC in the amount of twenty-three hundred and seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Motion, is there a second?
Out second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? One abstention. Thank you. Trying to make, bounce it off each other just to make sure we do get that. This is a lot of finance, but this is a smaller amount, still.
Most of them kind of.
Still a twenty-four hundred dollar. Um, we had EMS transfer.
Make motion to approve the transfer for EMS, an additional appropriation in the amount of thirty-four hundred dollars in the utilities, fifteen hundred and forty-nine, twenty-one in the building maintenance, ten thousand nine twenty-seven, fourteen in the ambulance repair, four seventy, thirty-five in sanitation, twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents in ambulance supplies, eighty-three hundred and thirty dollars of gas, oil and lube. And that's gonna come out of shift captain and the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents and full-time staff and the amount of thirty-four hundred dollars.
Yeah, a motion, is there a second? Second from Don, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to move on?
Make motion to approve additional appropriation for the clerk in the amount of two hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents in office supplies, election supplies, three hundred and five dollars and twenty-six cents, mileage, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, travel, two hundred and ninety-three dollars, service contract in the amount of thirty-one hundred and five dollars, and that's gonna come from clerical in the amount of forty-one hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents.
That's us.
That last number is a seven. The last number was hard to tell if it was a seven or some number I've never seen before.
Hey, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Just while we're on the clerk book, real quick, what did we decide about the fund that we were talking about?
Nothing yet.
Deal with that later.
Please, let's deal with it later.
I have to. Can I, we stand it out, one to everyone?
No, about what we were talking about?
Yes.
But we'll decide on it.
Yeah, we don't have to discuss it. I'm not gonna extend this meeting out in one.
Since you're, since you're handing out, then I'll, since you're just gonna be handing out, I'll, I'll entertain a motion or discussion on soil and water.
Make a motion, make additional appropriation, longevity of soil and water and the amount of five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And that's gonna come out of EMA director and the amount of five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Kate.
We didn't have any.
Why, just out of curiosity, why were we not, like, why did we not pledge it for that?
Um, well, it was her first year for longevity and she didn't add it to her budget and I forgot to add it.
Um, the next one was the Stark County Council.
Make a motion.
Yeah, did you guys know about this? Probably not.
I'm glad that you finally caught something. Good job, Rachel. And it probably wasn't you, it was one of the girls upstairs. Making a mo, a motion
Motion.
For an additional appropriation and county council for attorney, six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. And take that out of attorney and the amount of six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
You have a second from, uh, Don. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And then the next was.
Stark County auditor, receipt it.
I'm requesting it on behalf of the commissioners for seat it for the EMS races.
That we approved.
That you approved.
Making a, a motion that we uh. Wait. We did that, was that not supposed to start in twenty-one or twenty-two, not twenty-one?
No, you started it.
Did it immediately? Okay. Sometimes my memory's faulty. I have four kids around me. Uh Stark County Auditor, additional appropriation to full-time staff EMS. The amount of seventeen thousand five hundred, part-time staff EMS in the amount of twenty-five hundred. And the reduction comes from county bridges and roads in the amount of twenty thousand.
I'll second it.
Hey, all those in favor, please say aye.
Really? Nine dollars and twenty-six.
There's a small one from the recorder, hey, rules are rules, right?
Make a motion that make an additional appropriation for recorder and office supplies, nine dollars and twenty-six cents. And take that from extra help in the amount of nine dollars and twenty-six cents. I really like yours because there's only. Five bucks, ten bucks.
All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed?
Wait, who seconded it, Todd? That was Bernard's fault, not mine.
Um, is the prosecutor online?
She did not come in today to sign her transfers, nor is she here.
Um, another question.
I am requesting this for the prosecutor because this is gonna reflect, you know, no matter what department.
You said she might go and buy it, so I was just curious if she did. Are, are we okay now on PTD and everything else?
Nope, you're gonna, we're gonna be written up by the state board of accounts because we are negative in PTD during our next audit, thirteen thousand dollars.
Um, so this one, we did have some prior knowledge of it. I was just curious, just so we could just talk about the overall budget. But we need this, even with her not being here, so if somebody would like to make a motion.
Make a motion to make an additional appropriation Stark County Prosecutor. Second clerical, the amount of two thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars, social security in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. And make a reduction in health insurance of four fifty and trial preparation and two thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I'll second it.
Second from Kay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed? Okay, the next, I have commissioners.
Make a motion that we approve an additional appropriation for the commissioners. Liability insurance in the amount of two, twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and five cents. And juvenile detention in the amount of four hundred and twenty dollars. Move that out of health insurance in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and five cents.
Have a motion, is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Do we want to accumulate it for the highway department? It doesn't look like there's anything.
Make a motion, we have approved the uh transfer. And additional appropriations for the highway department. Repair and maintenance trucks and tractors, sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars, fuel pump maintenance, five hundred and eighty dollars. Office supplies, twenty-seven hundred dollars, repair and maintenance, four hundred dollars. And repair road equipment, thirty-nine hundred dollars. Take that amount out of gas, oil and lube, thirty-nine hundred dollars, bridge maintenance, four hundred dollars. Travel expense, twenty-seven hundred dollars, gas, oil and lube, five hundred and eighty dollars. And gas, oil and lube, sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Motion, is there a second? Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed? Or the truck asset list, I think it was pretty clear. Since it takes time anyways, it makes sense for Dan to go ahead and take a look at it tandem and come back on prices.
That's something, Rachel, is we have to appropriate that money before the end of the year.
He's, you already have it in his budget.
Okay.
So he really just, because of the amount of it, he needs to go to commissioners for approval.
It was part-time.
Pay raise, but the other things were also, we talked about someone that's in the commission.
Yeah, you already talked about a lot of this in the mission.
Yeah.
We talked about all of it, but the payers.
But the payers, right?
So the part-time pay was designed for summer help to run mowers, fourteen fifty an hour. Uh, due to the shortage of. Drivers, we're trying to find part-time CDL drivers. Um, fourteen fifty an hour will not.
Possibility of creating a part-time CDL line so that way part-time mowers are separate. I hate to, I hate to raise part-time.
Amend the salary ordinance.
Just amend the salary orders with a part-time CDL line.
Yeah.
What were you thinking as far as the amount?
Uh, I was gonna say eighteen fifty an hour.
I guess, real quick, what are your drivers making now, Dan?
Eighteen sixty-six.
Seventeen sixty-six. Yeah, seventeen sixty-six, they start at.
So I really, I hate to pay them more than the full-time.
Maybe seventeen fifty, since it's seventeen sixty-six, um, because they do give benefits.
I, I, I got a question for Dan, is we, they would clarify this. When you're saying CDL drivers, if you hire a part-time help and they drive the pickup trucks to plow, they don't, they may not necessarily have a CDL.
Uh, that is correct.
So we need to, you know what I'm saying?
They would be regular part-time.
Yeah, um, so we have a. F five fifty pickup. That you do not need a CDL to drive, and that's what we use in some of the. So a non-CDL driver. Could operate that.
So they would still be getting paid the same part-time rate as the mowers.
Correct. Unless, unless you change it to reflect snowfall, right?
I would, I would have it for eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty, that's more than the full-time make?
Right, that's almost a dollar an hour more than full-time makes.
I think the director can make the decision if CDL or not for whatever job applies, but there's still a driver, there's still extra risk, I don't know, are you thinking that? Are, are you thinking, I should say, since you've been a director of the, are you thinking that they would, we would lump those together but not pay?
You may have to, I mean, I don't know, unless you can find somebody. In fact, that pickup is a bigger obstacle just by driving the other truck.
So just have the range like we do for other things, and it's up to Danny. Whether or not, okay, he's, he's a plow guy, so he's gonna make this.
What, what I don't want to have is, okay, this guy comes in there and he's using the five fifty, he doesn't have a CDL, okay? And somehow by, who knows how, it slips all through the cracks and this guy gets paid the top grade because he's following snow.
Right.
And all of a sudden it comes back, whatever, you didn't have.
How about part-time driver with a range eight fifty to seventeen fifty?
Yeah.
He makes a decision. What he pays each one.
You might only have a CDL guy apply and you.
Well, you never know which guy's gonna be running that truck.
I mean, it could be readdressed then next year if it's gotta be eighteen fifty. I, I'm with Brad, the only problem is we hate to, we always do that for all departments. We hate to put somebody in higher. Than what they deserve. Drivers, even though, even though the benefits are there, I mean, the benefits are a big part of it, you know what I mean?
Pay a part-time, you know.
Which I guess. So, so on the other hand, the people that are there full-time are also pulling off of us for benefits.
Not necessarily though, I mean, they, maybe they don't take our health insurance.
Right, that's their own choice.
So are they lim- are they limited thirty-two hours an issue, or thirty hours, or what is it?
Thirty-two hours a week.
You know, I could tell Dan really wants the eighteen fifty, so I, I don't wanna.
Well, I mean, I can't get regular employees for this, so again, fishing for part-time.
Which if it's part-time, you may get some of those retired guys that.
Yeah.
I hate for you to do it and lose a couple more.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of, but we've gotten Todd's opinion. Bill, you've been out there a lot.
If you pay them more.
Right. They look at the benefits, they're there full-time, forty hours a week plus more, you know, and. There's one thing I wanna add to the end here. But anyway, I would be really afraid if you paid a part-time guy more than you paid your average driver, we'd have more guys walk right off.
Dan, um, you know, I think we hear why, why you would want it, so we recognize that, but I think that it sounds like. Giving you the range of eight fifty for now to seventeen fifty sounds like something that's more palatable, like, you know, you want this to try that out, start with.
Sure.
I think.
The other thing you can look at is, okay, maybe the full, or actual drivers that are there maybe increase. You know, if you brought in. More full-time guys, you know, have to pay just a little bit more on that end, you know?
How many months now without, I think the pay is the issue on getting actual.
Here since July, we've been four to five guys short.
Yeah, so I mean, how, how long do they have to wait before they get the year or?
The year.
Maybe I revisit that year.
Yeah, maybe that.
Maybe that can be something that's also at the directors. Because you may be able to get somebody that's been working for, say, LaPorte County or the state highway. And they have experience, well, they're not gonna come here and work for the lowest rate. When they could start.
Look at the range, uh, Bill had said he had one second thing.
I had one other thing, though. I think, and this is just my opinion, but in Dan's case, especially in the winter time. Things all the help he's, he can get the foul snow, I think you need to adjust the thirty-two hours for the highway department because. Can't, and if we get a bad winter, he's gonna need him more from that.
You, it's not, it's not county policy, that's through the federal government, like, yeah. Like, we, I mean, you can have part-timers that work more than thirty-two hours, but we have to offer them health insurance and benefits.
Right, and all of a sudden it becomes a full-time.
But we do have a two-week pay period, so they could work, let's say, forty hours one week and the next week, they could work.
Yes, because it's a monthly.
Right.
Thing.
So there, we do have a little function.
I make a motion that we approve the range of eight dollars and fifty cents an hour to seventeen dollars fifty cents an hour. For part-time at the county highway with the discretion of the highway superintendent.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Cause I have some discussion.
I have some question too.
Okay, let's, let's wait then, were you, were you gonna create a new line for part-time driver?
Yeah.
Put that range on it.
Or winner, winner driver somehow, so it's.
Let's just call, call a part-time driver.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll make it part-time driver instead of just part-time.
Got a second from Todd, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Is there any post?
Still use regular part-time starting at eight fifty to most.
Yeah, yeah. Decision on that, where he wants to park them and, you know. To start, to start. Oh, yeah, then we forgot our. Yeah.
Devil red eye.
We have the minutes before you from November fifteenth.
Make a motion we approve the minutes from November fourteenth as written.
We have a motion, is there a second? Um, the second from, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, go ahead and then we'll take further comments.
Okay, so our, the cost of our audit is a little over thirty-two thousand dollars. We can use ARPA money for that if you want to, so it either has to come from county general or you can use ARPA money for it. So something to think about.
And what was that for?
We already discussed using ARPA money for that.
Well, I, like, everybody has to be on board.
I wasn't.
Yeah, so we should discuss that now because. That's why we have to pay for our audit from the state board of accounts, they charge us for that, and we're already way short. I mean, we have to find some things to.
How much shorter we in county general?
I have a cash balance of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars right now, and I have to go through one more payroll and two more sets of utilities. So that is not good.
Well, that's what they meant the ARPA money for, not building pavilions and things like that. It was for us having a shortfall because of COVID. And that's what it needs to be spent on.
Even though we're paying that for, technically, it's for the other shortfalls because of its lack, it's our lack of revenue that's killing us the most. So, um.
You're such a gentleman, Todd, thank you.
So how, how do you wanna handle that as far as?
I, let's see what are, I mean, if we can, as long as we're not negative at the end of the year, you can, we can play with that in January. Like you, I don't, there's so much stuff you could do with it, like you could pay.
No, no, I understand, I'm just trying to avoid us.
To help county general, so like, you could start paying your entire EMS staff out of ARPA instead of county general, which would help.
Please don't start bringing all these other things, because then we're gonna have people asking us for the money after the meeting. How can we make sure that we cover that now so we don't have to have a special meeting?
We have to stop spending out of county general, and to do that.
That we agree that we're gonna do the ARPA funds now.
So what do you wanna do?
But, like, say, I make a motion that we take the ARPA funds and pay. The difference that we're short in county general with ARPA funds, Janu- at December thirty-first.
Can't, you can't just like, take ARPA money and put it in county general, though, stuff has to be spent out of that ARPA fund.
This is what we're asking, we need to move that over to ARPA, the thirty-two thousand, right? That's what I'm trying to ask.
For, for this bill, yes, can I pay?
Let's do that.
That out of.
I'm asking you, what do you need from us? Do you need a motion or are you?
Um, well, it has to be in our resolution. The, the twenty-some page resolution that we make, it has to be in there. I can do it now.
The next, coming up short, can you pay that out there also?
Yeah, so.
Well, can, is there a way that you can figure out what we're gonna be short? Like, if we're gonna be short thirty-two thousand. And that thirty-two thousand is what it's gonna take to pay EMS from now till then.
That's what I'm saying, like, I, if we paid.
Right.
Round of EMS payroll out of ARPA, that's going to help us not being short in county general.
Is that enough?
That would be enough to at least that we're not gonna end in a negative balance for the last payroll of the year.
Okay, we don't wanna take too much of it, is the thing too, like, we wanna try to, what Brad's saying, we wanted.
EMS payroll's like, uh, average forty-six thousand dollars.
And that's about what you think we're gonna be short.
Well. If we don't do something, we could end, I mean, we could have like a hundred dollars left, I don't know, I don't know how much payroll's gonna. Payroll fluctuates, we're gonna have holidays in there, I don't know exactly how much we're gonna be short.
So what do you do?
You know, so I mean, that should be a given, like, that, there's no way that won't be enough.
Okay.
So what do you need from us, though?
I don't really need anything for me right now, I need an agreement from any, well, I.
Do you need us to make a motion to pay EMS out of that for the last two weeks of the year?
I need you to make a motion that you're gonna accept. The state board of accounts bill, the last payroll of the year for twenty twenty-one for EMS. And that will be put into the resolution that you are gonna be.
Is that okay with the commissioners?
Yes.
And the commissioners are all free.
Aye.
Rachel previously told me that it was six percent, there was a six percent shortfall in income. And, you know, just, you know, kind of being really brutal about it. Now, I, it, it's my impression that shortfall in income below projections attributable to COVID, which I think is fair to say that is, is. Fair use for ARPA funds, correct? So, you know, I think you're gonna be well within that with that amount, which, yeah, so.
Now that we've started.
We should put a commission together for that.
Yeah.
And I would, I mean, yeah. Can I just give you some more, Ben?
No.
Do you give us anything else?
What you done?
Okay, so, so as you know, you know, all of our budgets were approved by the state board of accounts, all approved.
Now they're not.
Except for.
A little transcription error.
Except for a little error, a little, I forgot to add a zero to the EMS budget and I shorted them by eighty thousand dollars. So.
But that's also possibly why they approved the budget so easily because of that. But that's also possibly why they approved the budget so easily because of that number, my recommendation on that is to use ARPA funds for that also.
Hey, I made a little mistake, I'm gonna own up to it.
I, I, I think what we just discussed was that that person pays for it.
So I did this in their part-time.
For their mistakes, right?
We do have a new policy.
Which just formed before you mentioned this.
I made that mistake in their part-time EMS line.
Which we don't need to do anything on that until next year.
You know, well, um, no, you don't, if it's gonna come from ARPA, I'd like just paying it from, you know, starting in January first payroll, paying it from that.
So moved.
Okay.
Second. All those in favor, aye. Are you done, Rachel? Is there anything from the public?
I have something.
Oh, boy. Is it worth a dollar and thirty-six cents?
Everybody try to help. Real quick, just one other thing, is that, um, we were notified by Eric that there's that extra desk that's not gonna be used. We have the ELC and that's where that came from, we were talking about the last mission, Eric's offering for Joe to move here. Which would be better for our radio communication, but we have an office in the Purdue area, I don't want to vacate that. I still want to have that for EMA and for storage.
Well, we're still have Mark in that.
And Mark will still be in that, that office too, so Mark, Mark can keep an eye on that office for us. But there's reasons why we want the storage area still there because we have a lot of EMA items that are shared between.
Yes.
Is that okay with you?
In fact, we might need to start talking about them, but reclaiming some of this space that we.
Yes, I mean, it was never, commissioners never said you can have.
I didn't, I didn't even think to bring it up when they brought the contract before us a couple of months ago, but we probably shouldn't have done.
And for all you guys, Route Ten Pizza should be here like any minute on your way out if you would like to get something to eat, thank you for your time.
Wow. Is it for me too, even?
Yeah, just one last thing for EMA, um, we're also gonna ask for a, a piece of radio equipment from EMA, um, before the end of the year. You didn't take all the EMA money already, did you? For EMA, so we can, we, we want to have affordable radio that we can move from EOC. And, you know, basically utilize it and, and move it around.
It's an eight-hundred mark that has a battery backup, so you can move it anywhere you want to go, and it's got its own antenna. I just bought one for the fire.
Never asked. We'll be asking for it next year then.
What they're talking about?
Yeah, I, I mentioned it to him, we're, we're not gonna ask for it till next year, apparently somebody spent all of our money. Was there anything else from the public? Is there a motion to adjourn from the? Second, I.
Wow. Back up, I tracked my motion.
Resend your motion.
Go ahead.
I made a motion to adjourn.